The realest podcast ever. The realest podcast ever. Y'all's the haters on all of my moves, but now niggas on it. They used to bait me on me and my views, but now niggas on it. I used to tell them I'm gonna have me a show with now niggas on it. Her homies on it. Your homies on it. Y'all's the haters on all of my moves, but now niggas on it. They used to debate me on me and my views, but now niggas on it. I used to tell them I'm gonna have me a show with now niggas on it. Her homies on it. Your homies on it. The realest podcast ever. The realest podcast ever. The realest podcast ever. The realest podcast ever.
What up, what up? We back. Episode one, two, three of the realest podcast ever. Uh, we had two false starts. My shit was high. I was, I was at a ten, now I'm at a three and a quarter. First podcast ever, episode one hundred and twenty-three. I am your on again, off again, social media host, C Diddy.
And I am the co-host. I gotta find a better name, you know? I'm just over Matt.
Just be Matt Kane.
That stinks.
Sounds like an action hero.
Yeah, I actually like my name, but people don't like my name so much that it has made me, it made me question, you know what I'm saying?
My parents were kinda tripping a little bit, like.
I mean, we all got pretty plain names, you know what I'm saying?
Our, our shit is straightforward. Eight letters, Chad Fane.
And Matt Kane.
Matt Kane.
It's wild, like it's spelled, it's the, the, the ending is spelled.
It's essentially the same name.
Yeah, but I always like question like Mustafa.
Mohammed.
Not Mohammed, but Mustafa for sure.
I was watching, uh, Superbad the other day and Mick Lunden was like, yeah, it was like thinking about Mohammed. He was like, he's like, who the fuck? Actually, the most common name in the world. Do your research. Yo, they come on drawing on that movie. No matter how many years removed from it dropping, I cry every time.
You heard some crazy shit that I did watch the other day that just, it, it really like just drove it home for just how good it is to be white. So I was watching SportsCenter or something on ESPN two.
Okay.
And as the day goes on, ESPN is like the, the central news source. Even though ESPN has shows like SVP, you know, uh, First Take, you know, it's, it's just constant news in whatever format they're giving it to you for the cycle. ESPN two at a certain hour, it just tails off and goes into something completely different. You know what I'm saying? So I had on ESPN two and I, I guess I just wasn't watching TV and I turned my TV back on at like one in the morning. There's a sport called death diving. Have you seen this? Okay, so you know diving in regular diving?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They jump, do flips and somersaults and the goal is to go into the water elegant and graceful without a splash.
Limited splash.
This is the opposite. So you're trying, you're basically trying to go into the water as fucked up as possible. And I'm watching this shit for like a good ten minutes and I'm like, how is this? It's people cheering. I'm like, how is this going on? They have announcers. How is this happening? And the one dude came up there, his name was like fucking Bjorn, you know, it's always somebody from.
Flashmaster Bjorn. It was some nigga from. Shooter fuck.
From, from West Czechoslovakia or some, and, and he got up to the top of the podium. Mind you, they're like sixty meters in the fucking air. And the announcer was like, and here comes the fan favorite reigning champion and the crowds going nuts. Fuck. And he's like making money off of this and they're sponsored. They had Red Bull, Nike.
Real sponsors.
Dog. It was Nike banners everywhere, Red Bull banners. I'm just like fucking Oakley. I'm just like.
That's why I've come to the conclusion that you just gotta start a league. Whatever it is, you need a whole league.
Or just start off white.
Well, that's the clear advantage.
Could you imagine if, if thirty niggas just showed up at the YMCA in West Philly and was like, we, we death diving? There ain't a sponsor coming.
I have a question. Are they wearing any type of suits or anything like that?
Nah, they all like, they're on, uh.
Going in the water.
Swimming trunks and shit, you know what I'm saying?
That was it.
That was it. The one boy who won the joint, I cannot make this up, from fucking sixty meters. He, that's like a hundred and some feet in there. He ran and jumped off of the, the, the podium to the water. He, he went down into the water like this. Like sideways, like he was laying on the couch and I'm just. Help? And they like, and his whole side of his body was bright red.
Of course.
And they like, yeah, you could see from the mark, like he got perfect level out to go into. I'm just like, this is nuts, yo. And I'm watching it like this is, this is really a thing.
Yeah, I'm thinking he was gonna be like, you know, some, some bass sport fishing ultimate, uh, red snapper challenge. He's like, no, death diving.
It, it, it said the eleventh annual. So I'm like, that means ten years prior to this.
Getting bigger and bigger every year, baby.
Death diving.
They got national television coverage.
This is nuts. Everybody, everybody, and everybody getting paid and it was fans there cheering and hollering and I'm just like. When, when like, when, when they let black folks into like basketball, boxing, baseball, football, it was just like, they've gotten to where they, they just create sports.
Yeah.
Like axe throwing is a sport. Dogs pulling you on a sled is a sport.
Yes.
Anything.
Curling is a sport.
Yeah, like sweeping the ground is a sport.
It's an Olympic sport.
It's an Olympic sport. Real talk. I was watching that death diving shit the other night. Like I can't believe this is real. Real life thing. Other than that though, how was your weekend?
Uh, weekend was cool. You know, I actually worked a lot this weekend, which I can't normally say I do. Um, Saturday, we had the be woke vote campaign.
Who the hell am I talking about?
Yeah, that, that was this weekend. Uh, we had the be woke vote campaign.
It's been a long ass year.
At, um, fifteen seventy-five North Fifty-second Street at the Columbia Plaza, the infamous plaza where the, uh, the safe was lifted out of the Wells Fargo is what everybody.
It don't look like the Wells Fargo was back open.
Well, they're rebuilding it now, but they still, they do have drive-through action going on there.
Cause I saw the, the, the cardboard boards and shit on the windows.
It's still rocking.
Oh, okay.
They're just trapping out the band though at this point.
Other side. A little bit more. There you go.
Ah, here we go.
Now we're good.
Uh, they, they're just trapping out the band though at this point with the, uh, you know, just nobody can come in. All ATM transactions and drive-through. So, um, yeah, so we had that. Yeah, my fault. Like anybody out there. Drop in my social media, either on official TRP, Instagram or Twitter. Tell me which calls you have gotten more. Warranty calls, the Democratic Party or, uh, the warranty, uh, I mean, or the, uh, I just got a wellness check call from some random doctor that I've never been to in life.
Lee was saying how she kept getting calls, kept getting texts and I was like, yo, I have gotten none. Like I've gotten none.
Yeah.
Like just none. So I'm just like, it's been wonderful. And the, the, the day I said that, it was like, oh, we not hitting more. And, and they, they started hitting me. They texted me the other day. It was like, yo, can we count on you, you know, for the Democratic vote? And I was like, look, real talk, he, he promised the second STEMI. So they texted me back and was like, come on, it's not all about that, you know? I'm like, hey, listen man, like a free twelve is a free twelve. It's gonna be fucked up regardless, you know what I mean?
It's bad out here right now, man. Like people are, you know, are, are doing bad financially and, um, you know.
Are they though?
Yes.
Because remember it was like the, it was like the, it was like the Harlem Renaissance for them couple of months.
Yeah, for three months.
Yeah.
All niggas got in them is a ninety day run. Regardless of whatever field they in, niggas got a ninety day run in them and then it's over.
There was a female rapper, I don't know her name. I wanna say something doll.
One of the dolls?
They're all named doll.
Yeah, they're all dolls.
There's a Cuban doll, there's a London doll.
There's a dream doll.
An Asian doll.
Yes. There's a bunch of dolls.
New Zealand doll.
You was Baccarat stand doll.
Yeah, but one of them dolls was basically talking about how she was voting for Trump because. Uh, one of the dolls.
Yeah, the Chicago.
I saw the video and people was going off about it on Twitter and she basically was like, no, cause like everybody around me like was eating over these last six months. She, all the scammers, all like everybody was up, so I'm voting for Trump.
Yeah, but what she's not factoring in is everybody going to jail.
Everybody going to federal pen prison. Yeah.
Uh, Pastor Carl made a very good point. Shout out to him. He actually was at the, uh, event early on, uh, Saturday.
Carl hit me, was like, yo, I was there. Why you weren't there? You was late being real black. And I'm just like, look, man, I know you got meetings with Goodell and DeMarre Smith and shit. I ain't mean to hold you up for that long, but I, you know, my bad on that.
He was basically like, you know, Nick, niggas is about to, uh, take all the reform work that went on the last four years and just upend it because they all going back to jail. They gonna replace, everybody let out of jail. They got a, they got a new nigga to replace them. They gonna get their thirty-six thousand a year out of you niggas one way or another. Believe that.
Yeah, like it, it.
Did you see, uh, did you see the rapper that made a song called EDD fraud that got locked up?
I didn't, I didn't click on it, but I did see it.
Yeah, he's locked, he's in federal custody.
I saw they had like one of the.
Seven counts of, uh.
Excerpts on, uh, on, uh, Facebook and he said, um, uh, something, something, something. All I gotta do is file a claim or some shit like that. I was just like, yo.
Yeah, they said when they busted him, he had seven different, uh, blue debit cards on him. And like, yeah, you going. Don't even worry about it.
That's a damn shame, man.
My biggest thing is that like, why, like, you know, Lil Wayne said, real G's move in silence like lasagna, uh, which is a genius level bar by the way. What the?
They gave Wayne shit for that bar though, when it came.
Yo, Joe Biden was so, he was like, yo, mom, he said my mind was blown for thirteen weeks. He's like, no, how the fuck do you spell lasagna, yo?
No, niggas hated that bar. I remember, I remember arguing with people.
Nah, that's genius level.
That was, motherfuckers hated it. It was like, it was the cheesiest shit ever.
Well, how come nobody never said it before?
I'm just like, no.
Cheesy rap lines, I think a shit that's like low hanging fruit or stuff that's been said to death. You can't give me something that somebody's never said before and it's like, oh, it's cheesy. Like, no, you just hate Wayne.
Yeah.
That's all.
LeBron shit.
Yeah.
You win enough and they just look for anything.
Nah, fuck you. They did it to Jay-Z. It, it wasn't long, but they did it to Jay-Z right around volume three when he put that, come here, baby. He put that shit out. It was like, get Jay-Z the fuck out of here.
I was one of those. I, I wasn't get, get Jay out of here, but I was like, all right, you know, I just was on the tip like Jay's drinking a lot of Chris. You can tell he's drinking way more Chris than normal.
Way more Chris than, uh, water?
Yeah, cause he went from like really spilling to Jay, hey, mommy help me say it now. Like all of that shit was like, all right, you know what I mean? Like I'm cool off of this, but nah, the lasagna line was great.
It's genius.
It was great.
So with that being said, um, I just don't see how we've gone from like that and like, you know, don't you know Bad Boys Move in Silence to like everything is for the gram and for social media and YouTube? And motherfuckers are just willingly like self-snitching on they selves like repeatedly over and over and over.
I will never understand the, the, the concept of getting online and telling people what you're doing.
Yeah.
And what you're about to do. And my homie was saying that the other day when, when homie had said something around a bunch of people, like he was about to do something to somebody and he like, you know, you can't even really take it that serious. Cause it's like, he ain't stupid enough to just be saying that shit out. I'm like, no, here's the thing. He is. You know what I'm saying? They are like, they will make an announcement and then do exactly what they made an announcement about because they want people to know this.
And then be like, who's snitching?
All y'all niggas rats.
All y'all niggas is rats. Like nah, just, just you, big dog. Niggas out here hating, telling on, telling on a player.
But the be woke vote shit, not to go completely off the rails. I actually enjoyed it.
I, I enjoyed it. I didn't know what to expect going into.
Turned around.
I told, I was like, listen, man, it was, it started off a little slow, a little shaky. Me and Dan was out there.
Chad was like, if he ain't here, I don't know if he need to come.
Yeah, no, just keeping it a buck. You know what I'm saying? We weren't paid to appear or nothing like that. Uh, but apparently there's a lot of money behind all of these like little rallies and campaigns and shit. So I'm trying to track down, uh, the person that put this joint together. I need my appearance fee. Cause apparently there's, there's millions being dumped into this shit.
Yeah, because it's like, it's, it's, it's a, it's a real thing. Like especially from the Democratic Party.
Yes.
Like they can't lose Pennsylvania again.
Yo, they swooping niggas up like the Truancy Vans.
Yo, real talk.
They coming to get you.
Like head of state.
What you doing right now? Come with us.
Like, you know, it's funny cause I was having this conversation with somebody the other day and I, I, I try my hardest to just not talk to people, especially if I know.
Yeah, like ever?
Yeah. So he was like, yo, it just feel like the, the Democrats is doing way too much right now. And I'm like, well, the Democrats lost the election in Pennsylvania. Like they lost the election the last time.
By doing nothing.
But I'm like, you know, Pennsylvania is like historically Democrat, you know what I mean? And they lost, like Hillary, Hillary straight lost Pennsylvania. And he was like, yeah, I'm saying though, like, is it that serious? And I'm like, Pennsylvania has like, I think the sixth most electoral votes in the country.
Union.
And he was like, what you mean? And I'm like. I'm just going to lunch. And I, I just, cause I'm like, it's just gonna be too much. It's gonna be, you know what I'm saying? Cause it's like.
It's gonna be like eight hours later.
Yeah. Cause it's like, I know you don't understand the Electoral College. I know you don't understand the vote breakdown.
If you don't, if you don't stop that conversation right there, the amount of subsequent what you means is infinite. Like no matter what you say, he ain't gonna get it because he don't got it. And I'm likely, this is like a twenty-five or older person.
He's twenty-eight, twenty-nine. So, so people, I, I leave it alone. The next day I come back to work, whatever, I see him. So he was like, yeah, yeah, I peed what you were saying with the whole joint. He boarded back up and I'm just like, all right, here we go.
Here we are again.
You know what I'm saying? So he was like, so basically, I think he was like, it's what? It's like twenty, I think, I think it's twenty electoral votes for Pennsylvania. And he was like, all right, yeah. So it's like basically the first person to hit two seventy. And I'm like, right. So he was like, I don't understand how the whole shit happened with Bush and them down there. I'm like, it would, that was, that, we not getting that.
Flim flamery. Let's not do it.
That's three hours. You know what I'm saying? I can, but I was like, that's why. But I was like, that's why it always comes down to like California for real, for real, when it goes in. And he was like.
California and Texas.
And he was like, wow, I'm like, cause California is number one and like they have like fifty-five and then Texas, I think Texas is like thirty-six or some shit like that. So I'm just like, yeah. And then to that, California is three hours behind. You know what I mean? So it's like where we're voting at seven o'clock, the polls close, you know, whatever time it may be. Yo, bro, when they close, I said like, bro, they, um, they close, you know, then you got the California is three hours behind us with the most electoral of us. So it's like, you know what I mean? And he was just like, yeah, 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 damn. So like P eight really matter and shit. I'm like, nigga, if you number six, yes, you know, so that's.
Six out of fifty.
Yeah, so that's where it's like, yeah, like Delaware, I think is like at the bottom, like, you know what I'm saying? So it's like, yeah, no, that is a big deal. So that's why they pushing, 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 pushing. Where you got Carl running from this event to that event over here.
He said he had four or five things on Saturday.
It's events, it was things everywhere. That be woke and vote thing was everywhere. Atlanta, Detroit, they were everywhere.
That's a national, uh, a national campaign and you know, all of the biggest like democratic cities.
Yeah, but it was, uh, definitely fun, man. Shout out to, uh, Big Dan was there. Big Dan was impersonating me before I got there apparently.
He had the mask on. They like, oh yeah, that's your man Matt.
Uh, a lot of people came up and spoke to me. I don't really know who a lot of them were, you know what I'm saying? You, I get that a lot. Whoa, what up, Matt? Made me sick. All right now, you know what I'm saying? I don't know who you are.
Yeah, uh, Hot 1039 was there. Shout out my man DJ Caution. He jumped on camera for us and he shouted us out all day.
Yeah, all day.
Literally all day. He's a big, uh, fan of the show. He working some behind the scenes stuff to, you know, help some players out also. And, um, no, it was, it was a good event. It was a great turnout. A lot of cars came through. Um, you know, they basically had anything you could think of as far as giving away waters, uh, you know.
Shout out, shout out Kirk Cooks. They was out there.
They was out there and, uh, and my homegirl Steph, uh, Chefany Nicole.
Yeah.
They was out there. Their food was super good.
Turkey burgers was hitting.
Yeah, it was on point.
And it was for the free ski.
Yeah, so, uh, it was no, it was no cap. Everything was for the free. You know, people came out, you know, had a good time, man. Um, uh, two of our guests today were actually there. Um, State Rep Morgan Seifus and, uh, Councilman Curtis Jones was there. Also, Senator Vince Hughes was there also. Um, he actually jumped on camera for us. So it's a little bit of overlap from what we did Saturday, what we do today, but we want to expand the conversation around the upcoming election, the political season and why it's important to just get involved in your community at large and starting with voting.
Now, before they come in, let me ask you, this is me and Taylor were talking about for you here. How long do you think it takes for them to figure out who the president is after November?
At least ninety days.
Okay, cool. So you, you not tripping.
Yeah, nah, 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 nah. At least ninety days. And then it's like, they gonna be moving, like if say if Trump lose and they start moving by and stuff, but Trump were like, what's going on? Like, what's this about? Like, like, yeah, no, it's over, son. No, I never said I lost. You know what I'm saying? Y'all said I lost. I ain't say I lost. They gonna have to like rumble in, uh, in the square.
They showing up in January trying to like do the inauguration. Trump still got the cable in his name. Ain't taking shit out the closet. Bad ass. Like, yo, I honestly think it's going to the Supreme Court though. Like mail-in ballots is like.
The one thing that made me feel better about it was when I found out that they do have a full tracking system with the mail-in ballots. But my thing is, what if your joint just gets straight lost?
I had a full tracking system for these jeezies. These shits literally was like shipped, we don't have a clue, confirmed delivered. Like, that's how that shit be.
They, they send you a postcard, uh, once they get your ballot with a sticker that said, I, uh, voted by mail. So that's like a confirmation.
Okay. I don't feel very strongly about it.
That didn't help me at all, Taylor. I'm not gonna lie.
I just got mine, so that's all I know.
It didn't ease my anxiety.
Yeah, I, I, it, I don't know, it just.
You know, at the point where they started stealing mailboxes all through the Northwest, I was like, yeah, this shit, this shit gonna be rough.
I remember, I remember when, when I was young, one of my, uh, poorer friends at the time, I, I lost contact with him just through property and shit like that. But I remember we were walking through the plaza, the mall, we called it the mall, the Penrose Plaza and shit. We was, you know, niggas, we called it the mall. We was walking through the mall and this nigga took a soda, an open can of soda and put it in the mailbox. And I'll never forget that. I was just like, what the fuck did you, what the fuck did you do that for? And he was just like, fuck you mean, fuck they mail. And I'm like.
That's a federal offense.
So that always plays back in my mind whenever anybody's like. Whenever anybody's like, I'm gonna mail something, I'd be like, go pour soda all in it. Just bring it to me.
Real shit. You gotta take that to the distro center.
Like I, I just mailboxes and shit.
I can't name the last time I put something in the mailbox fam. I'm going straight to the post office.
It's a mailbox at my, kinda like my apartment complex. The people still be using that joint. As they pulling out in the morning, you see motherfuckers getting out.
I would assume that that mailbox has never been empty.
It probably, and I, cause it was a pretty nice place. So it's like, yeah, the mail, I, I be seeing the mail guy here. We got a good rapport and shit. Like he be knowing when some sneaks and shit come for me and shit. Be like, oh, big ass box in the truck, man. You gonna come carry it with motherfucker. He be knowing.
Yeah.
But he cool. I see him all the time. So it's like, yeah, I could imagine it's getting empty. It's just the, the fact that it's two thousand and twenty.
Yeah.
So tying notes to pigeons, you know what I'm saying? It's just wild, you know what I mean? Because we got, I mean, and think about, you can, if I can literally.
Every bill I have is on electronic delivery.
Like dog, you can manage your fucking 401K, your pension, everything. You can move money here, here, there, over there. I got eight different fucking bank accounts and I'm shuffling shit. I'm talking about, remember back in the day where you couldn't do things through different banks?
Yeah.
It's gotten to the point now where banks are straight partnering with each other. Like I'm, my American heritage is straight goes with my, uh, transit worker. Like I can straight send shit though. You know what I mean? So it's just wild to see people like, hey, you got stamped. And it'd be like, man, what the fuck are you about to do? You a Unabomber? What are you about to do with a stamp? That's, you know what I'm saying? I remember back when I was young, we used to have stamps.
Yeah, in the grid.
On, on deck, like books of stamps. My parents had the, the, uh, the label for the top of the left.
Yeah.
Mister, Mrs. Kane seventy-seven. Like that was the, you know, cause you ain't writing no return address. Every joint, put your sticker on, keep it moving. And it's just like, yeah, like now it's like, you don't have an address book.
No.
You know what I mean? Remember your voicemail?
Bruh.
You be, my dad used to break his neck into. First message. Hey, what was last? Call me back. Yeah, I gotta call later. You know what I'm saying? And it's like now it's just all in.
Everything is in real time.
Phone is real time. So it's like, I send that email, like my doctor the other day, my workers comp was like, yo, I'm trying to issue this check out for you today. What's up with your paperwork? Oh, one minute. Take it, put it on my phone, send it to him. He, and send me the email back. He like, I bet I get the joint, check issued today. It's like.
Yeah.
Ain't no send that, wait a couple of days. Like no, so it's just like, for us to have to go back to that for voting is like.
We really in a stone age, we in a dark ages.
In the words of the great E Ness, smell the smoke. You know what I'm saying? It's just what it is.
Yeah, it's a bad joint, man.
It's gonna be a mess.
So we gonna, uh, talk to our special guest all about, you know, the whole political process, the upcoming election, their thoughts, feelings and everything and what they've been seeing in the communities, uh, so far.
We might get some nonsense at the very end.
Very, very end. But today, we grown up, Chad and Matt, we're gonna ask the questions that the people wanna know.
I actually thought about wearing a suit. Lee told me I was drawing. I was doing too much.
That would've, that wasn't the joint.
Then I seen Bra without a suit. I was like, all right, cool.
Yeah, I, I've seen Bra with a suit on like one time. He's been working, uh.
Oh no, Bra always has. Every time I catch him, he's in a suit.
I've seen him in a suit like one time in the last four years. He been.
I seen him balling in a suit one day. Like Bra just always has a suit on now. It's crazy.
Get down circle house. Drop it down, dump it down low. It's hard bottoms.
You wanna get everybody in?
Yeah, for sure.
All right, we gonna bring everybody in.
Realest podcast ever. We back. Uh, we got two special guests in the building today. One return guest and one first time guest. Uh, y'all can introduce yourselves. I will say ladies first.
I appreciate that. Uh, I am State Representative Morgan Seifus. I represent the one hundred ninety-second Legislative District. I'm gonna do the neighborhood shout-outs. So Overbrook, Overbrook Park, Haddington, Carroll Park, Winfield, Overbrook Farms, Morris Park, and that's it.
That was pretty good. Let me see if I could do it. I'm Councilman Curtis Jones Jr., AKA Run Kurt Run, Mr. Fourth District, better known as, and I represent Andor, Roxborough. All of yours, all of yours. In West Philly.
Don't worry about it. I'm on the, uh, I'm on the campaign trail this year. So, you know, we gotta keep saying it.
Yeah, I'm a, I'm a adopted, uh, Rox, Roxboroughan. So you, yeah. I'm part of your constituency.
Yeah, we was wondering where y'all live there, cause this is.
I was, I was up, I was up Roxborough for a couple of years.
Oh, cool.
He abandoned me.
We were like, all, we were like all on the same stretch at one point.
Oh, cool.
It was me, him, our friend Dev and Rick. We were all up there and I used to make all of them drop me places and stuff and that was just me.
It was, it was a headache.
Yeah, they all moved to get away from me, but you know.
Roxborough was a little small town.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? It's, it's like a small town.
Yeah, yeah.
And, um, Washington, George Washington actually went down Ridge Avenue and they have hundred-year-old houses.
It's historically designated now, right?
We, we did that early. Cause they were trying to tear down all these mansions and put up Wendy's.
Yeah.
Aw, man.
And we was like, no, you're not gonna do that.
Too much of a historical.
Yeah, there's been a, uh, like a development boom in Roxborough the last like four, five years. I've been up there probably like eight years now.
Like honestly, it's a lot of older homes. Like you go over to like Midville, Queen Lane, all of that stuff. Them, these homes have been there for like years.
Oh yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
Victorian style twins in your town. Yeah, it's a lot of.
Does, uh, East Falls fall into your jurisdiction too?
East Falls, Manny Young, Roxborough.
He has the, he has the hip district. I got Overbrook Farms.
All of the eat outside with your dog on the table district, yeah.
So Main Street, Main Street is my more popular food drag. It's like if South Street and Chestnut Hill had a baby, it'd be Main Street.
Good way to describe.
We, we trying to get one of those corridors over on my end. Uh, it's a long time coming, but we'll do it. Yeah, I mean, we got a new development going on over there. It's a, uh, apartment building.
They gonna have to power wash everything. It'd be nice to see it over there though. So, so you said you're, so you're basically upper West Philly then? Like if you're over broke.
So it depends on what you call it.
To like City Line Ave.
Yeah, so I think it's Saint Joe's University, um, the Overbrook Farms part in Winfield, that's where that is. But then I'll, I go all the way down to Market Street. So think of like sixty-third, sixty-third to sixtieth and Market.
Okay.
So it's almost like, I always like distilled accounts.
Lancaster Ave, all of that.
Yeah, so like Lancaster from sixty-third to about fifty-fourth. It's like a tale of two cities. Yeah.
So Mork, for the people that missed the, uh, the first show that we had with you when you did the call-in, um, back before the primary, give our guests, um, cause we got a lot of new listeners now, give our guests and our YouTube community, give them your history in politics real quick, how you got involved in it and what led you up to where we are today.
Yeah, so, um, I first kicked off, uh, politics or just an interest in politics when I was in, uh, undergrad at University of Virginia. Yes, the University of Virginia with the tiki torches.
Okay.
Um, and.
Chambersburg.
Yeah, Charlotte's. So I took a random, uh, political science class and, uh, you know, I hit my dad up like, do we know anybody in politics that, um, that, you know, I can help out with, you know, team up with? And lo and behold, I know Chad, you know, I, I ran track. He was my first track coach. Yeah, like at nine years old, me and Casey. And, um, so got a chance to volunteer on this campaign. I was his youth policy advisor. Cause at that point, like, you know, our generation was graduating from college and, you know, we had to steward loan debt, going back to live with our parents and stuff like that. Um, so got a chance to be his youth policy advisor, then teamed up on his actual legislative team. Cause he won his city council race, became his, uh, legislative aide, made it to deputy chief of staff. Then I transitioned over to an organization called the Philadelphia Youth Network, which concentrates on education and workforce development opportunities for kids. So it's like the big summer job program.
Yeah, I did that back in the day.
Yeah, we all did. We always worked ready kids.
Yep.
Um, so at that point, um, the, the woman that preceded me, uh, Louise Bishop, she was transitioning out of office and that was all she wrote. I ran a race. I was one of five. Um, I was not the Democratic nominee, but you know, with my mentor over here, boots on the ground, knocking on tons of doors. I think Brad Diddy came in, uh, during my second reelection. Um, and you know, that's all she wrote. That's how I got involved in politics. That's how I got to the state house. And I'm actually up for reelection. We run every two years. Yes, it is ungodly. Um, but it's been a good ride. Uh, I first got elected when Donald Trump got elected. So when people are asking, you know, how did you feel about the election? How do you feel about your first win? You're like, you know, well, we kinda won the battle, but lost the war here. Um, and up in Harrisburg, we got like real life Republicans, like the Donald Trump kind.
Right.
That's why when people talk about the election and us having like this big point lead, we had, we essentially had the same point lead that Hillary had around the same time. But when you.
There's still a lot of work to do.
Oh yeah, absolutely. I mean, you still gotta deal with people that are just not interested in voting, don't see themselves in a Biden Harris ticket, or you got people in Luzerne County, York County, like nah, I'm still Trump. So I mean, it's gonna be, it's gonna be down to the wire. But that's how I got involved. That's how, you know, I got to politics and it's been a good ride ever since.
Right. Councilman Jones, same question.
Ooh.
History and politics.
I, I go back to, uh, you know, gang war and in the seventies, I worked with the House of Immigrants Youth Group. I was a counselor there. And, um, I went away to a excellent institution called Millersville University. Uh, and Shaka Vatah, who, uh, Uh, and Shaka Vata, who uh was a lifelong friend, asked me to come back and help him and run uh for office. And I did. And the bug bit me.
Yeah.
I started looking out the window and saying, hmm, why do we have to put up with that? We can change it. Uh, and we had our first demonstration where we uh got carted away. Um, uh, we handcuffed ourselves to uh the uh polls in city council. And literally they gave us a break and let us go, um, didn't arrest us. And then the next week Milton Street and them tried it and they went straight to jail. So, so you know, it's better to be born lucky than smart. Um, and then we got involved in uh, in the youth movement to clean up politics. Uh, and we used to get beat up all the time. Like every six months we would lose. But then we started to get tougher.
Yeah.
Smarter, uh, more engaged in the process and started winning. Uh, and we uh began to be able to take on offices. The first one was at a hundred and ninety second district, which now Morgan represents. Uh, we won by out of like ten thousand votes cast, fifty eight votes. Less than one vote per division. And so when people ask, does one vote matter? Hell, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's definitely. And so we, we then um, Shaka ran for senate. We hooked up with a maverick you may have heard of, Vincent Hughes. Uh, helped him out. He lost the first time. We came back on the second time around and won. And I was more the king maker. Uh, I was more of the strategist.
Right.
Um, I like the back scenes, X's and O's.
Give it what the name is.
I'm a knuckle dragger. I go out in the field and I, I like talking to people. And I like, I don't go by national polls. I go by barbershop polls. And I listen to what people are talking about. And then translate that into actual political policy. And so I had to wait and decide if I ever was gonna be on that side of it. Um, when um, Michael Nutter ran for mayor, I decided to put myself up. It was thirteen other people and one of them was uh Carol Campbell, who do not sleep on her. She was, even though she had physical disabilities, she was fierce. Like I have friends that I grew up with that were incarcerated, calling home and say, I love you homie, I love you big homie. But my brother's coming up for uh parole and she knows the judge and la di, da di, da di, can't be with you. And so, you know, it's like when you went into the schoolyard, sometimes you just gotta step to the biggest bully and bust him in the mouth. And if you get lucky, you know, you wind up elected.
Yeah.
And I did that. So now I closed jails.
Oh, God.
House correction. Closed it. That's what I do.
That's awesome. Uh, looking at the political landscape and everything that's going on right now, how different do you think the country is and then your local uh areas are compared to four years ago when Trump initially got elected?
So.
If there is any difference.
We were talking about this on the ride up. And I said, if somebody would have woke you up four years ago and said, a game show host was gonna be the president of the United States. You'd have laughed them and said, pass that.
Yeah.
Cause that can't be our reality.
Right.
Um, I have never, I've disagreed with Republicans. I've disagreed with um Bush. And I've disagreed with other Republicans, but I've never, ever, ever been ashamed of my president. I mean, I disagree with you, but you the pres. I remember seeing the UN when he said he was the greatest president in the history of this country. And the translators were translating what he said to the various countries. And each one of them start busting out laughing, like it was a joke because it was, but it just wasn't funny.
Yeah.
So the difference is you have a man who, growing up in, in our reality, you had to go through certain rites of passages like schoolyard bullies and this and that. He never had to fight a fight in the schoolyard. His bodyguard fought it. And he had never had to ask to, to, to date someone. Someone asked for him and his wallet spoke for him. Uh, and whenever he got in trouble, he had a lawyer to bail him out. So he has never gone through what you and I have had to negotiate in life, who makes our character. He is someone whose daddy made.
Yeah.
And we're in trouble for it.
Yeah, I mean, I think um, I'm just jumping real quick. Um, I mean, I just think right now, everybody's just getting a real civics lesson. If you don't know about the Supreme Court, about the presidency, about every level of government, you just have not been paying attention. So I think the gift and the curse of this situation is that it's woken a lot of people up about what matters, what's at stake, and what could potentially change it on every level of government. I think the great thing, the last thing, is that they're asking the same thing of Democrats. Like specifically tell me how you're going to be able to improve my day to day if we put you in office. So I think at the very least, it has shaken us up to recognizing that.
Yeah, I, I was saying, uh, going to, to, to what he was saying, like, it amazed me at how the last election, how uninterested everyone became. When it was Trump and Hillary, it was just like, when it was Obama and Romney, it, it was just like, it was a party. I told you, it was a party.
Right.
Like when I went to go vote, they were Harlem shaking, it was dancing, it was nuts.
We need to bring that back.
It was, it was wild. And then when I went for the Trump Hillary, I literally walked into school was like, are y'all, y'all doing, y'all here or is it like, where? Oh no, come in. It was like nobody there. So it's just like, damn, like nobody was interested.
Yeah.
And now it's like, it's come, it's gotten so bad with him that people are just like, alright, I gotta vote for somebody. I don't know who will vote for somebody, I gotta get a vote.
Nah, definitely think of.
That was Carl's issue when Carl had, was on the town hall with Trump. It was like, and people, Carl was like, he had so many people mad at him, like, oh, you know, why would you do, why would you basically say you're undecided and you know, we need to get Trump? He's like, I'm basically throwing a question out there, like, if we do decide to vote for you, now what?
Yeah. I mean, I think um, in twenty sixteen, we slept. We were asleep. You literally had, and you know, no shot at the Hillary campaign, but she kept coming to Philly and Pittsburgh. And I'm like, sis, that's not, this is like Penn, Kentucky in between. You gotta really go like door to door and boots on the ground. And we just did not keep the same energy throughout the entire campaign. And I think that's the difference that you see this time around is just like, it's too much at stake for us to relax. I mean, we're going down to sixteen days. I ain't never campaigned so hard in my life.
It, it, it was a joke that wasn't funny when you woke up.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
You were in shock, literally saying, nah, that really didn't happen, did it? And we've been paying for it ever since. I mean, this guy is like not playing, he ain't faking it. He's crazy.
Listen, we, we, we had the conversation the other day. What, what was it that we were geeking off of in group chat that he did recently?
Um, was it Superman shit?
No, when he said, um, I feel great, I'll come down there and kiss everybody. And our other homie was like, yo, at this point, it like, it don't even like shock me no more. And I, I was like, yo, the, the president got hit with the Stone Cold Stunner. And you, when you really think about that, like in the grand scheme, like imagine Obama walking down to the, the ring at WrestleMania. Like it don't even make logical sense. But like Trump really got Stone Cold Stunning. It's like, that's the president.
Yeah.
So it's like, yeah, and, and that's kinda what you gonna get. It's like, it does, there's no reason for him to be in office.
Oh, absolutely.
But look at his following.
Yeah.
That, that's what is scary.
And that's the part that trips, trips you out the most. Like fifty million people was like, I vote for him.
Yeah. Well, wait a minute. The racist, the, the hardcore Klansmen type and are down with it.
Yo.
And he's giving them secret signals, like stand by and be ready and I'll call you.
It's, it's wild though because only in America, and I guess that's the American dream thing, and that, that might've been what people attach to. Because it's like, you can become the president with no experience. Regardless of whatever you, and it, it, when you really get into his story and watch documentaries and really read and you see, he wasn't that great of a businessman. He's just a great finesser. His family is great.
At the end of the year, when y'all do your uh, you know, y'all a war genre, he needs to get finesser of the decade.
It's no way around it. Listen. He, he's just a legendary finesser who came from a legendary finesser in his father. So when you see that his business record really isn't that great, he almost destroyed, practically did destroy Atlantic City. Everything he tried to do in uh Wall Street was a failure. It just, it was a lot of, the football team, everything was just a failure. So it's like, alright, you turn around, you like, alright, I'm gonna run for president. He's never been a senator. He's never been a councilman. He's never been an alderman. It's like, dog, I work at something. You can't buy a train without two years on the street. So it's just seeing somebody become a president with no experience. I'm gonna hold you. I, I told you, I'm trying to get out of, of driving a bus. I applied for a COO position three weeks ago, but I have no experience. I'm just like, whatever.
And you gonna get that joint, cause you can finesse them.
At this point, it's like, yo. It's like, Trump has shown us, yo, you can really, you get enough people to buy in to your foolishness. It's like, yo.
But his whole thing was marketing.
Oh, absolutely.
Everything he did, whether it was his wines or, or cheap steaks, he put his name on the Trump brand.
Yeah.
And he rode that right to the White House.
Oh, absolutely.
Uh, and, and he'll ride this country right to bankruptcy.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I mean.
Yeah, I've, I've never seen it like this, where it's just so much anger. And I, I said it. Me personally, are we talking about, I think it's gonna end up in the Supreme Court, cause I don't think we're gonna know. Yeah, I don't, I don't think we're gonna know for sure with all this mailing ballot stuff, but it's gonna be a lot of angry people, no matter what way it go.
They gonna be angry for a while.
Literally. He's setting up the narrative like, if I don't win though, you know they cheated.
Right.
And if I don't win though, we ain't going down easy.
The fact that he's uh building up all the chaos around the whole mailing ballot system, he's already setting it up.
He stole mailbox. Oh, poor Oregon, yeah, go get, Oregon Washington State, they don't need them joints.
Mailing your ballots, yo, go get the mailbox.
No, I mean, he's been uh, he's been suing us up to Wazoo in Pennsylvania, suing us against, yeah, suing us against the mailboxes, trying to get them out of here. So they also were trying to get outside poll watchers to be able to come in and poll watch our locations. So almost like an intimidation thing. We had to take them to court for that. So I mean, it's gonna be a battle.
Like he was himself suing Pennsylvania?
So the, the Republican Party here in Pennsylvania was suing, um, suing the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and yeah.
So the Republicans have done this before where they put out rumors that they were gonna check people for warrants.
Oh, at the polls.
At the polls.
Oh, wow.
Like come on now, that's voter intimidation at its worst.
Absolutely.
And I mean, for you.
That's nuts.
Yeah, so, so we, we have to fight that and successfully we have in court.
Absolutely.
Where they can't do that. You, that's your fundamental right as a citizen.
Yeah.
Not councilman, not rep. The most important on election day is citizen.
Right.
And I vote.
Wow. Um, what I've seen in the last few weeks is that a lot of um, different like affluent black people, well-to-do black people, that were saying, hold your vote, or I'm not getting involved in this. I don't have an opinion one way or another. Have now done it about face and they're like, the situation is dire. We've gotta get Trump out of office. Um, I saw Dr. Claude Anderson say that, who was part of the Carter administration, wrote the book Poweronomics. And I've also seen Sean Combs, uh, Puff Daddy say the same thing this past weekend. He put a whole video press release out with Charlamagne and all that, basically saying like.
Rough go about it on Twitter.
Like the ti, the time is now. Do y'all have?
I thought he was holding his vote out too.
That's what he's saying, like everybody's like.
That's what he said. And now he's, so these people have like done an about face on what they literally told us thirty, forty, fifty days ago. Do y'all have any thoughts on why that might be or why people are now saying, I'm on board with the Democratic ticket now?
Because last time around, if you recall, Hillary was up in the polls similar to this.
Yeah, Hillary was up, yeah.
And we woke up to a nightmare.
By like fourteen points.
Yeah, she was out in the bed, yeah.
So this thing is far from over. He has a way of flip, flipping it back to his advantage. So people who are at risk, cause you know, endorsements and things like that, and I might get cut from this sponsorship. It's not worth you sitting on the sidelines and letting your whole culture go down the toilet.
Absolutely.
You gotta stand up at a point.
Yeah, I think the most recent one was the whole contract with Black America with uh, was Ice Cube.
It's funny, cause I have on an Ice Cube shirt now. And I thought about it this morning when I, when I put it on, it came out.
That's crazy.
And I was just like, ah, damn. Well, I ain't going shirtless, so it's like, whatever. But it's just like, you, you got a situation like that where, okay, y'all throw out the platinum plan. Y'all throw that out into, into the world. Alright, five hundred billion allocated to black business, black schooling and overall black economics. Alright, cool, great. Ice Cube steps up and was like, yo, Democrats, what's up? And they like, we talked to you after the election. And he like, alright, like I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go over here. Right, you know what I'm saying?
Inside game. We've said something to, so, so to get elected, sometimes elected officials play the middle. They don't wanna be too controversial, cause I'll use, I'll lose this constituency.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna play, yeah, I'm gonna play right in the middle. I said to them, and Morgan has said to them, listen, you better speak to black men in barbershops. We've had this.
Absolutely.
I said.
Absolutely.
I said Biden, finish the sentence. I support black men by boom, finish it. And if you can't do that, then they're not listening.
Right.
Like, you know, one out of three of us is in jail, probation or parole. That's a fact.
Yeah.
And if you don't talk in things like expungement.
Yes.
After ten years. And if you're not talking about closing the pipeline from school to prison. And, and go with a new pipeline called school to paycheck.
Yeah.
If you're not saying those things, you're not speaking to my needs.
Yeah.
Absolutely. And I think um, I think it's one to the Ice Cube situation. I feel like they flipped. Because after they put out these plans, if you look at his plan and actually look what Trump put in his plan, adopting from it. He put things like making Juneteenth a national holiday. He put things like making the KKK a terrorist organ. So he nitpicked what pieces he took.
He didn't adopt the whole.
He didn't adopt the banking reform, the lending reform that he was talking about in the plan. And I think that's why people are making the switch. It's like, you know, the great finesser is gonna have you at the table, but he's not really gonna take you serious. And all of the promises that he's making this five hundred billion dollars into black and brown communities, creating jobs. He already had the opportunity to do that. But what he did instead was the opportunity zones.
Right.
Or the big tax cut. And answer this one question. Does the city of Philadelphia need any more tax incentives to get us to build? They're already building. So these are like empty promises.
Tax abatements everywhere.
Oh, absolutely.
But we spoke about that a couple of episodes ago with the whole Trump, with the uh, with the, like you said, with the standby, stand down thing with the Proud Boys. And like, people couldn't understand why he won't denounce white supremacy. And it's like, here's the thing, they gonna vote for him. Like he's that player in the middle. They one hundred percent gonna vote for him. So I can't haul off and diss them.
Yeah.
For y'all who might not even vote.
Absolutely.
And that, you know, like he said, play in the middle. So it's like.
His plan is base.
Yeah, like you can't go against one edge. It's just the way it go.
But I think you also see black men stepping up in this election cycle, like Pastor Carl. And again, challenging Democrats, like no, speak to African-American men. And what does your plan look like that's going to address my, you know, day to day, my quality of life? And it's not all about criminal justice reform. I mean, Matt, you working out of union, that's something. You don't wanna hear about that. You wanna hear about economic opportunity. How are you gonna put more dollars in black businesses and things like that versus?
Your health concerns.
Right.
You score low on every health concern ever. You have higher hypertension, you have more organ failure based on sugar. You have all of these different distinguishing characteristics because of the melanin in your skin.
Right.
And if somebody were to, if three hundred whales washed up on the shore of Delaware uh river, every marine biologist would be down there trying to figure out why. You die at a disproportionate rate all the time and nobody cares. We shoot each other, black on black crime. Uh, when we gonna figure those things out? So that, you know, my son, your son don't, aren't the endangered species.
Right.
Absolutely. Uh, Dr. Claude Anderson was on The Breakfast Club the other day and he was speaking to the fact of um, you know, his history in politics and stuff like that. But more importantly, the fact that he unapologetically used quid pro quo whenever he was dealing with whoever across any party lines to get things done for black people. And the fact that a lot of our politicians now are afraid to specifically say, this is what I'm gonna do for black people. And that's whether they're black, white, or other. And I, and I think like, the whole thing with, with the Ice Cube thing has kinda gotten blown up because he specifically asked the Democrats, what are you gonna do?
Yeah.
Oh, let's talk about it later. And the Republicans seeing an angle to be able to say, oh, Cube is with us. They went and said, oh, well, yeah, come on. And then it turned into a whole thing while also like nitpicking what they're willing to do. So I say all that to say, what do y'all think about the fact of like the black community saying to our politicians and holding them accountable to say, what are you going to do for us specifically?
So in my body, I got four freshmen and they crazy. I got Brooks, I got Thomas, I got.
Gautier.
Gautier and I got uh, uh Karen, uh Kathy Richardson. They putting pressure on us old heads. Like we passed more uh progressive legislation in the last four months than we did in the last four years. Love you old head, but here's what our agenda says. And we get, we, we have to either cowboy up.
Right.
And we get, we, we have to either cowboy up or, you know.
Holler back.
Yeah, and so out of the six progressive pieces of legislation they proposed, we passed five of them. We weren't, we weren't gonna do New York rent control, sorry. But we did the other five, which uh, dealt with um, eviction moratoriums. It dealt with all kinds of um, uh, processes that you have to go uh, before you evict somebody. And that would have never happened. But for young people like yourselves, stepping to us saying, all right, the status quo gotta go, we need more. And that was real.
I mean, that's the same thing up at the state. So you have a lot more, um, you have a lot more millennials coming into the legislature. And you know, with millennials coming into the legislature, we essentially have issues like student loan debt. Um, you know, the majority of us are renters, so we are concerned about tenant landlord issues. And when it came down to the spending of COVID nineteen funding, so we, Pennsylvania got roughly around four trillion, not trillion, four billion dollars. No, I'm sorry. Uh, when we, we got roughly around four billion. And when it came to spending for small businesses, you know, I don't represent the maniacs or the main streets or the center city businesses. I have like mom and pop shops. I don't know if you know this guy named uh, Daryl Thomas. He's a, uh, he's a barber. And like literally every day on the phone during the pandemic, when they had to shut down, they are like cussing us out. Like, what are y'all gonna do for the black community, like directly? So as a result of that conversation, uh, we were one of the only states to dedicate a hundred million dollars specifically for black and brown businesses. And I say that to say, like, it takes that level of pushback and that honest conversation as Democrats, like, listen. If you want us to keep voting for you, what are you going to do specifically for this community?
Yeah, I, I think people who aren't black and brown don't understand at times the, the issues that you flag. So him, his shop had to shut down. You don't have a rich uncle or a whole nother business, so your family got this. And this to your Scangionean sons and all that. You know how it be, it's just what it is. We don't have the same. You know, we, we're like almost running a different race. We always talk about it at my job, where it's like, there's such a divide. It, it, it's, and you've seen it so much over these last couple of years, just how drastic the differences is between the races.
I've literally never seen a presidential campaign talk about black wealth. The fact that you got the Republicans and Democrats talking about how their platform will help generate black wealth is astonishing. And I think, again, it is a direct result of people like Pastor Carl, like saying like, that's not enough.
Obama's joint wasn't, it wasn't no talks about that.
When you look at the disparities of the number of people of color that come, could, got COVID, it's because of the jobs you do. You on the bus.
There was people out there, trust me, but no, you, you right. You on the front line.
And you, you took, and, and people then of other races translated that to say that you somehow were more risky. No, your job made you have to be on the front line. And so we had to look at that myth and then that reality. Uh, and so those disparities also we're looking at. We, we stepped to step to and said, if you don't put PPEs on these buses, we gonna stop funding you. Like, you save their lives. Um, you know, my relatives. TWU, baby.
Yeah. I mean, and that's the thing, like, that's why it's important for us to not just talk to the agencies, but also talk to the unions. So we understand what's going on behind closed doors.
One, one of my homies I work with, he blew my mind with that, because he had like went down to Atlanta to like a party and I'm like, y'all doing the most, man, with the whole COVID thing. He's like, man, you drive a bus, what's the difference? But it's like, yo, when you work at the hospital, TSA at the airport, you know. You, you in it, you know what I mean? Everything where you dealing with people constantly every day and have to, and you, you know, one of my homegirls, she uh, she works from home and she was like. They told her that they probably won't be back in the office till mid twenty-one at best. She's like, oh, it's driving me crazy and this and the third, and I, you know, being in the house. And I'm just like, yo, at the end of the day, you, you in the crib. Your crib nice, you got wifi, snacks. It's like, yo, I wish I could put on a virtual reality headset and drive from the house. But it's like, it's not realistic. So it's like, at the end of the day, yeah, being in the house is a drag and you not doing your normal one-two you would normally do. But you also don't gotta face, like, it's like, and, and I think people have gotten to the point where like COVID is like, oh, we coming to the tail end of it. And it's wild seeing it, like when you see in the NFL have to shut down whole training facilities, whole teams are coming up with it.
Shit, baseball has shutdowns literally every other game.
The Dolphins had thirteen thousand people at the stadium the other day. And I was like, what is this?
We are in the beginning of the second phase of COVID. And it's not a joke and it's, it, you know, by the time Trump get this uh, vaccine working, it'd be.
They just canceled like a couple of the tests.
It'll be June before it's at CVS. You know what I mean? And so we have to keep our guard up and be careful. Because you guys are younger, but you have parents and you have grandparents that aren't as uh, able to um. Withstand. So we, if you don't care about yourself and you Superman up under there, you better think about Lois Lane at home, grandma.
And that's what I think this really, this election comes down to, is like, who do you want at the helm leading us out of this? Like, who do you want making decisions about who gets PPE, who has access to testing? Like, my district didn't have access to testing. We just got access to testing. I literally had to go to another county in order to get a test. Which is, you know, I'd have a car. Imagine somebody getting on the bus. And I just think, you know, you have a president. I, I believe you have this president who, you know, caught COVID thinking it's a joke and has access to the best healthcare. Whereas communities that, you know, we come from, don't have access to that.
Him saying that he wanted to wear the Superman shirt was the craziest thing. And so that, as, as wild as he is.
Steroids make you a little loopy there. You know what I mean? You start believing it. Believe in that hype.
But it is wild, because it's like, like he said, the, the COVID Corona thing has literally gotten to the point where people where it's just like, ah, whatever. You know what I mean? And it's, dude, to my job, he was gone for a couple of weeks, he back now, whatever. It was like, oh, in my mind, I just, I guess he was on vacation, I don't know. He was, oh, yeah, I had COVID. He was just like. He was like, yeah, nah, just, I lost my taste for a couple of days and went down, got the test. And he was like, yeah, you got it. And I chilled in the crib, went down, and he was like, it's negative, so.
I, I had a guy, you know him, he said he felt bad, he was at work. His wife took him to the ER. Seventeen days later, he woke up grabbing at the, the stuff down his throat. And so it ain't a joke. He lost track of seventeen days of his life. He can't get that back. And if you hate the mask, if you don't like the mask, you gonna hate the ventilator.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we have, um, so up in Harrisburg, the Republicans, they don't really believe in it, so they don't.
They're all anti-maskers.
They come to work with like no mask on and that literally they weren't telling us when people were showing symptoms or had con- contracted it. And literally you have two Republicans out right now because they caught COVID. So a ton of us had to get, do contract tracing, had to stay home. Some people had to even stay up in Harrisburg. Because, you know, they have young kids or family members with comorbidities, so it's not a joke.
Yeah, the one guy, I forget his name, he was a, uh, like a prominent black Republican. He went to the Trump rally.
Herman Cain.
He was promoting the Trump rally in OKC about, don't have to wear masks, this and this. He catches COVID, dies from it. Then they end up posting, after he, he's dead, they posted like a message about not wearing masks for COVID on his Twitter account.
What was the, what's the governor from New Jersey? Uh, you know, you know, he caught COVID.
Oh, uh, Chris Christie.
Yeah, he said, listen, he sold them out. He said, listen, wear the mask.
And you know, he's like heavyset, so he got a comorbidity issue.
The craziest part about the COVID thing is that you, they don't even have nothing for you. You know what I mean? Like, you get an infection, they might give you some penicillin, you know, you got a cough, they might give you some, some, some uh, na- what's the nasal spray? But it's like, you kick COVID and come in there, they just like, you got COVID, go chill. Really can't do anything for you until you need a ventilator. And then, and then at that joint, they like, your credit of about six hundred, we don't know. Like, seriously, it's, it's a mess. So it's like, yo, the fact that people are, even for, like, at, at the bus. And it's crazy, because actually I go back to work Tuesday, you know, what, tomorrow.
What bus are you on? Cause me and my youngest. Matt make me sick.
Twenty-ninth Street, North Philly. But um, I'm actually going back tomorrow, so I haven't been out there since.
Oh, yeah, he got in that accident, right?
I got in an accident and then uh, but even that, I only worked two months this year, because of the uh, I broke my hand last year, going into the new year. Then when I came back from breaking my brook, uh, right here, when I came back, that was when the Corona thing popped. So they started pulling the buses up the street. So I, and then I went back out for like three weeks and then had the accident. So, you know, I've been out, but I'm going back tomorrow. But uh, I was saying it the other day to, to my homie, I'm like, you would think that people wouldn't be on the bus unless. People are really on the bus.
Homeless people. I heard about.
When they pulled all them buses off the street and we went down to like the uh, what they got, Life Essential Lines, so my depot only had three lines, the twenty-seven, the six and the sixty. So basically, they were only running buses that went to, went past several supermarkets and went past hospitals. So when I came downtown, I'm, I, I was doing the twenty-seven at the time. You come off the expressway twenty-seven, you got the four on Broad Street, the thirty-two. The, the two on Sixteenth Street, none of that was running. So when you got downtown, it was you verse, it was like Warriors. It was you verse everybody. So you going up and down Broad Street and I'm talking about people with carts, bang, you just like, yo, why are y'all? Then to make it even crazier, the trains wasn't running. So no, all the subway, they cleared out the subway and locked all the gates. So it was just, it was mayhem. And like, we had people at my job that were literally just like, they were given the COVID relief, where you can get twelve weeks off, and my daughter's sick. I ain't even got the daughter. I'm out of here. You know what I'm saying? Seriously.
And, and they were catching the bus down to the airport and just staying. They had a whole encampment down there. And you know, nobody was flying that much.
They were telling me like, people were straight staying in the garage.
Yeah, I'm trying to tell you. They had to figure a policy as to when they wanna clear that out. You know, because they, 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 talk about apocalyptic movies, they was down there, yeah, you with us. And the police can't help you, you know, so it got really wild. And um, I, for bus drivers, for police, for um, people that were grocery clerks. You guys were heroes. I kid you not.
It, it was so many people who were, who were, hey, you saw just how, how, how nec- how much of a necessity. Trash removal is, and people were losing their minds. And I was trying to explain it to somebody, I'm like, cause one of my, one of my good friends works for the sanitation department. And he was telling me, he was like, how short they were, because let's say us three are a team, you drive a truck, we're both pickers. If you got COVID, we all out. We can't come, because we on his team. So it was like, it was things like that happening. And that's why it was so many people just going out. Cause if one person pops with it, y'all gotta, y'all gotta chill. And yeah, that's how it was, that's how it was working. So it's like, yeah, trash removal, police, uh, bus drivers. We had so many, if one person gets it, who else was in the break room that day?
So insider story, we all know certain union members that represent um, healthcare workers. And they were coming up calling a councilman. They sending me in there without a mask, and I know this is a COVID unit. Oh, councilman, I got COVID and they're sending me back in the unit. And these kinds of little things. Our seniors were catching hell. And that's why the high mortality rates, because first of all, you know, you talking about eighty-plus year-old bodies taking on that virus. The virus was, was beating them up. And so, you know, we, we, this second wave is no joke.
One of my home, good friends, she's a nurse, and they were doing a uh, like contracting almost to nurses to come to New York. Remember when New York got like super slammed? So she went to Brooklyn and she basically, she works in Jersey, but she went up to Brooklyn for two nights. They paid her sixty-five hundred dollars for two nights. In her mind, she was just like, oh, man, yeah, I'ma come do it. She'd never do it again. She saw thirty-seven people die while she was there in the unit in two days. And she was just like, I can't, I can't. She's like, you're gonna need like uh, therapy. Well, cause, and then she was like, it's so informal, because you're covered in all of the garments. No families there, no, you know, so she was just like, never again.
I don't mean to freak people out, but if you go by the morgue, they had freezer trucks.
Yeah, that was in the.
New York was wild.
Freezer trucks to just store the bodies.
Bodies, because that's how many people were dying. And so the morgue was filled. And they said, let's go get this refrigerated truck that used to keep chicken.
And when this is over, we're gonna put the chicken back in it. Like, that's, that's how crazy the world is, man, it's nuts. But let me ask you this, getting back to the political thing, do you see Biden and Harris changing? Uh, uh, like, do you, do you see a transformation they do get in?
Uh, for the country?
I mean, just like, just overall, like the whole platinum plan, all like, never mind that, you know what I'm saying? But do you see it as like a, uh, I understand that it'll, it'll course, I, I don't know, I ain't gonna hold you, cause it's like.
You, you saying you're not a believer?
Not that I'm not a believer, I just think it's gonna be mayhem. I think we've reached that point where, you know, it's like, you know, once the fire is going. Get the dog and your, your things and just get out.
I guarantee you, no matter who wins, them care packages is ending.
I think so too.
We cannot sustain four hundred, six hundred dollars.
I think the care packages, but then also I'm frightened about when it comes to tax season and how many people rely on getting.
That for sure. And my, we talked about it a couple of weeks ago. Once that runs out and that's done, do people just, what happens?
Who is the victor? The reality, the bill gotta be paid. It's like, we was eating at the banquet, everybody, you want some more wine? You want some more, give me the double order of those chicken fingers, right? And the bill come. So that's what it's, so we are at a city, as a city, facing a seven hundred and fifty million dollar projected deficit.
On the state level, we are projecting a five uh, billion dollar deficit.
So, so, so one or two things gotta happen. You cut or you increase taxes. So those, that's our.
It's one of the two.
It's one of them two, it's not a third. And so we're looking at embracing for reality check. And so we've been flying the plane. You know what I mean? And we wanna land it, but you know, we running out of gas and I'm telling you, we, we, this is going to be a multi-year recovery. So, you know, this is the bad part, and there's gonna be a part two of the bad part. Because we, we, you know, listen, we got hiring freezes, we got recreation centers, we can build them, how we gonna staff them?
I, I read, I read an article maybe about a week ago and it was saying, if you thought twenty was bad, get ready for twenty-one. Cause twenty-one might be the worst year of your life. He was talking about how the money ending, the fact that you still got a lot of people out of work. The rent situation and housing situation, it's just, you, literally, me and her, we went the other day, we looked, because we looking at like cars. We went to the Maserati, they were literally like, yo, take the car. Email me. Zero percent financing, we'll pay you the first six months. What was he saying? Oh, extended maintenance package. They're literally just like, yo, please.
Inventory isn't moving like that. Now, I'm gonna tell you, the opposite is true for refrigerators. Like there was, like I, I bought a freezer, it took four months for it to get here. Cause the factories that closed overseas, the, you know, it wasn't on the ship. And so that kinda delayed reaction. And now they getting a second wave over there?
Yeah, I had a friend of mine that's uh, in the nightclub business, he owns a, uh, he owns a nightclub. He had ordered a bunch of lighting fixtures and all of this stuff and tables for his nightclub back in November. COVID hits in February, they basically told him, we don't know when your stuff is coming. It shows up randomly in April. He ain't in a position to open because of everything being shut down. So now you out the fifty grand, not to mention all your week-to-week, month-to-month income, and you just gotta sit on this investment until. The, the economy gets, gets to come back and the state opens back.
Representative Cephas does, what I do, will matter as to not stop it, but to mitigate the impact. So if, if we, and you know, our logic in city council was, if you don't do a moratorium on evictions. Where you gonna put these people? What homeless shelter, you gonna put them in? And it's cheaper to keep it in the property than to. At, at like two hundred dollars a day, take care of some, two hundred dollars a day, take care of somebody in a shelter. Cause all that comes with it ain't just the bed, it's the supportive services.
But then also on the flip side, so on the state level, we had to make sure we balance the conversation around renters versus, you know, owners. Because you have a lot of black and brown people that got into the middle class, because they have, you know, one property here, one property here. And it's almost like, well, how do you protect them too? So like, we have, I think, like one point six billion left of COVID nineteen, COVID nineteen money to spend. And you know, we have to look at priorities and making sure like neighborhoods that we come from are able to recover. And yes, it may be a slow recovery, but again, it goes back to the election, like what, who do you want at the table, table making those decisions? And I think one of the reflective things was how he got. And I think one of the reflective things was how he got COVID nineteen money to small businesses. He sent the money through banks. And you know, banks are gonna, you know, charge their fees and let's not talk about redlining and their.
That was wild.
Yeah, I mean, and the practices still exist. I mean, you had the city of Philadelphia sue, I think Wells Fargo over their redlining practices. So the fact that he sent tons of money through, to his friends and you know, small businesses are competing with roof crisps.
Got a check.
Lakers got a check. They stepped in was like, yo, come on, niggas.
And that's the thing is like, who do you want at the table making those type of decisions?
So can, can I, November third. When we vote, make those important decisions, do not forget the ballot questions. There are two very important ballot questions. Please vote yes. The first one is to establish a office for victims' rights. So you know, when people unfortunately are victims of crime, who looks out for them? Who makes sure that the funeral clause and retaliatory aspect of it, when you have, are a witness to a crime, you know, and you live on the same block as the perpetrator, who makes sure that you cool? So those kinds of things are gonna be done with that first office.
But it also take, it also will take care of families who lost someone that were involved in some type of criminal activity.
Alluding to this before on, on the show.
Because, because right now we have a state level fund that doesn't offer families if you're.
So if you was out there, you didn't, you, you may have been out there. That still doesn't mean your mom ain't a victim. She still has to bury you. She still cares about.
And that's the difference between this plan, cause you do have some groups that are opposing it, but the difference between this one versus the state is that it does offer that type of compensation. And you know, when you come from a city with how many, you know, gun violence.
Over three forty now?
No, way more than that.
No, I think it's hovering around there.
Three forty?
You can Google that, fact check it.
I, I thought we was at like three sixty something.
Could be.
Were we above three?
Let me tell you about the second. Second one is the citizens' police oversight commission. Who polices the police? So we're establishing a commission where if you have a complaint, oh no, wait a minute, we, we ain't gotta go far about people who have complained against the police.
Oh, absolutely. Like my younger sister, like one of the things that I constantly talk about with um, you know, some Republicans, they don't believe that police are bad actors. And I always tell them, I have a younger sister, Chelsea, she literally had a gun put in her face by a police officer, an African American police officer.
Because she wouldn't let him holler.
Yes. And. Yeah. It literally was like seven AM. She's probably gonna hate me dead, I'm telling this story, but it was. Seven AM and uh, she was coming home from her girlfriend's house and she was on her way to tutor high school kids in mathematics over the summer, cause she was like an actual science major. And guys trying to put in, first of all, nobody in Philly is pulling over at seven AM with some unmarked car. And she's not pulling over. He follows her into my parents driveway and literally pulls a, a gun out on her. And you know, just because of that story, I tell Republicans like, you're always trying to paint the narrative of the actual uh, person that is being violated. But what happens if it's, you know, you take state rep off of my name, take councilman off of his name.
My daughter, my, my daughter, she's a state auditor. Casey went to school with her. She's.
Oh, went to school with Chad. He went to Central too.
Oh, you went to Central?
I'm two six oh.
Two six oh. Well, she was one of, on, on your track team. She's as square as they come. You know y'all central.
I'm a, I'm a outlier.
You are definitely outlier.
She saved her money, bought a vacant property in Southwest, in Southwest. Her and her husband fixed the property up little at a time. She has not one, not two, but four children. She was pregnant with the fourth. Four o'clock in the morning, a high risk warrant unit kicks the door off the hinges, shotguns and, and uh, flashlights in people's face. My grandkids on the top of the stairs, ah, right? She's pregnant, put her on the ground, put her husband next door. They flashing lights, looking at the picture. Well, that ain't him. He light skinned. He's dark skinned. Well, maybe he's up there. So they searched the house. No weapons, no drugs, no nothing. Finally, after a good twenty minutes, he asked, can my wife get up off the floor? She's pregnant. They let her sit up on her. And you know, my smart ass daughter, you know her. She says, and my father's councilman Curtis Jones Junior. Awkward silence.
Yeah, we, we effed up.
Yeah, we done fucked. You shouldn't be, have to be a councilman's daughter. Sister in order to be treated with dignity and respect by people you employ.
Yes. There's been a lot of conversation around um, nationally around defunding the police. What do y'all think about that, about that concept? And does it make? Does, does it make sense? And can it work in a crazy vigilante town?
I'm gonna go first before he goes. So I think for me, I think the calling it the defunding of the police is an attempt at a shock factor. I think it's not necessarily that, that, you know, seniors or individuals don't want to see police officers in their neighborhood. They just of course want it to be better policing and not like this a police state. Um, and I think when it comes to defunding, it's really taking a look at their budget to see what needs to be in there and what doesn't need to be in there. So I think in Philadelphia, I wanna say it's close to a million dollars that they spend on freaking laundry. And you know, I think it's a, it's about time that we revisit, you know, are we spending?
Now who spends a million dollars on laundry?
Police department. The police department.
They have uniforms.
Saying like, it's um, so every time, and I had a chance to work in the councilman's office for about six years, I told you that. And I worked on the budget. So we would go line by line, getting a better understanding on what we're funding. So I do think it's about time that we rethink how we're policing and look at how we're spending our money in that department. So every single time that the budget season comes around, you literally have departments that are looking to do cuts, like twenty percent across the board, right? But when it comes to the police department, they get a damn budget.
Yeah, they go up every year.
So I think it's time for us to have that conversation and what new policing in our communities can look like. So that's what the defunding conversation means to me.
So to the representative's point, they haven't had a budget decrease since the sixties. So everybody else gotta tighten their belts. They haven't. So when you peel back the definition of defund, we defund everything and refund everything all the time. We reassess. That's a part of the budgeting process. So should the police department be the domestic dispute arbiter when, when you could have social workers going out, counselors going out, doing that? Maybe not. People who have mental illnesses, are they, should they be, they don't know this guy is dangerous or not, or coming off of that K two, which has been a plague in our community, how to uh, redeploy them so that they don't hurt themselves and others? So we're gonna take a look at it, but let me just say this. I live and where I, my office is at, fifty ninth and market. Every twenty eight days, somebody gonna get shot. That's a statistical reality. So do I wanna take more uniformed police off of that responsibility? No. Do I want them doing marriage counseling? No. So we're gonna take a hard look at how we deploy our resources. And there is no such thing as a golden goose, golden cow. A sacred cow that should not be looked at. Um, and quite frankly, the FOP, man, they, they the toughest gang in this city. FOP, they, you know, uh, the, the, the head of the FOP told me when we submitted this bill a while back, said to me, councilman, I'm gonna rent a Goodyear blimp. I'mma put on the back of it, Kurt Jones is not a friend of the police and fly it over the Eagles game in your district. So the, the thug in me said, and if you do, I'll never have to pay for a haircut or another drink in a bar in my neighborhood ever again. So go ahead.
Absolutely.
Because his perception of how people view it, they're, they're, people have issue. I'm, I'm, when we did hearings, I'm, I'm hearing preachers and pastors and you know, teachers talk about their experience. You know, of what they went through. And I'm like, man, is it like that? And it is. So when, when I, ninety nine percent of the police officers in Philadelphia are good, hardworking neighbors of mine. And I, I support them. I go to, whenever they do trainings up at the police academy, I come up there and tell them about driving while black and don't take your work home to your wife. However, that one percent that rob drug dealers, that one percent that go beat their wife afterward, there has to be a honest process that if I file this complaint, it ain't gonna wind up in the trap.
Yeah, I mean, that's one of the reasons. So on the state level, they're doing a lot of stuff on the city level around policing. On the state level, even with uh, Kevin, he's um, advising a lot of us. We're trying to reform Act one eleven, which is. Yeah, which is the um, the essential, essentially the policies that govern their contracting. And also does their arbitration process. So all the time when you hear in Philadelphia, when you have a bad cop that's done something horrible that you're like, oh, he has to be gone. And when they're coming back, you recognize, well, you don't recognize it, but it's really because of the arbitration process. And police normally pick all of the arbitrators on the board and we don't really have an opportunity to get rid of bad cops. Always because of like some tech or something.
So let me translate that. You rob him, you get charges. You're a police officer. You get fired or brought up on charges. Two years it takes for us to get to the bottom of it. We go to arbitration, who, of the three arbiters, two of them are cops. Nah, he was alright. Put him back. You get all your back pay. Every raise you should have gotten. Every overtime opportunity you couldn't identify that you got burnt out of them and get it in a lump sum.
Listen, I'm, I'm about to tell you. So you know, we're accepted. So we have issues all the times where I gotta go to arbitration. So if you hold off, run somebody over, you know, take somebody leg off, whatever, whatever. They'll hold off. Can you, you sit out, you know, years ago, I actually had a situation where I, went a little left of somebody. They had put me to the side, whatever. And I came back, you know, we had to go to arbitration. So a lot of times what happens with them is you go to arbitration and they'll just be like, oh, you can get your job back. And people just like, take it. And I had a homie who was a police officer. He was telling me, if you are a cop and you go to arbitration and you get your job back and come back and they don't hit you with back pay, it was like, you, you had to do something crazy. He's like, dudes come back no bull. He's like, they getting checks for a hundred and fifty.
And that's the thing, we're trying to take.
I'm not even joking. My man's a cop. He's straight like, dog, like dudes is coming straight back six figure checks like it's nothing. Cause like you said, every, your vacation, everything.
Every raise you could have got.
Every raise, every piece of little overtime, you can go straight prove you like, oh, everybody in my little unit was doing OT, they was averaging this much a month and they was doing it for six months. I could have got all of that. And like, yeah.
And that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to take out the misconduct, uh, misconduct and the disciplinary process out of the arbitration process. I mean, we're not trying to touch, you know, how you negotiate your contracts, but I mean, we literally have police officers on the force that can't go to court because they're not trusted and they've had already proven that they have lied on the stand.
Part of the active community policing people, you can't be trusted to go to court. I just find it odd that every time something happens with a police officer, whether it's locally or national news, the second thing you hear after what they're charged with is their individual FOP is stepping up to fight the charges. No matter how heinous or crazy it is.
And like he said, the FOP biggest gang, and I know we look at him like, but it, it sounds wild, but that's what you supposed to do. That's. To do. It's just that we have terrible unions other places and people just like, ah, he on his own.
The history of the police, twofold. Southern police were formed to be slave catchers. They were supposed to make sure that you ran away from the plantation, we brought you back. Northern police were to guard property from mobs of drunken people to make sure that their mansions and houses and restaurants weren't broken into.
They was also catching slaves to return them to the south.
So the, the evolution of this fraternal order is that, that's where it comes from. And so yes, they, they, and then during the Rizzo days, they came into real strength. They could do no wrong. And, and, and imagine what used to happen to us before those video cameras in your phone. It was their word against yours and your word didn't matter.
Like honestly, the whole Rodney King thing, that doesn't become national if the dude don't got the tape recorder across the street. That was somebody from his apartment with a, with one of these. That doesn't become a thing. You know what I mean? And it's just, it's wild. I said like, uh, I went, a couple of years ago, I had a situation, I went to the supermarket out of Ridge Pike and guys were in there stealing credit cards. Unbeknownst to me, of course, cause I'm, I'm getting deli. They was going in people purses and taking credit card. So I, and we walked past each other in the deli area. And this is what got me jammed. I saw them and like anybody else who do, you know, you, we all know. As black men, you see a young boy, you, you, I mean, you see a, a, a young boy, you nod up, you see an old head, you nod down. I see him, I'm like, they do that? We walk past each other. I go scan my joint, use my debit card, bounce out of there. Couple hours later, detective calling my phone screaming, hollering, yeah, you got till midnight, come up here with the, with the credit cards and your partners. So I'm thinking it's my man Lee, cause he play around like this. I banged the phone. So he called me back, yo, yo, nah, this.
How'd he get your number?
I scanned my card. So he called me, he called me again, screaming, hollering, screaming, hollering. I'm like, yeah, okay, whatever, whatever. I banged the phone. He called me again. He like, listen, this is a real deal. Seriously, he start running down his information. I'm a detective, da, 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 from the White Marsh Township, da, da. So I'm like, alright, I pull up at the light, it's a cop to the right of me. So I do nothing illegal, I have nothing wrong. I pull the cop over. I'm like, yo, pull over real quick. Talk to this dude, see if this is a real deal. Cause he keeps calling me, screaming, hollering like he's a detective. Cop starts talking to him. Yeah, he get off, his partner come over, he like, yeah, he a real detective from White Marsh Township. Were you in a white supermarket today on Ridge Pike? I'm like, yeah, I go there all the time. He was like, yeah, well apparently some credit cards got stolen, da, 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 da. He's like, you didn't do nothing. I'm like, dog. I, mind you, I'm in my sub uniform. I'm like, dog. So whatever, whatever, another cop pulls up, then the sergeant pulls up. Sergeant was white dude. Sergeant pulls right up, I hear him. Why he not in cuffs? And I'm like, wait, what? He was like, yeah, why he not in cuffs? Why y'all got him just out there talking to him? Put him in cuffs. He, he, they got a warrant for him. Put him in cuffs. And I'm like, so the cop came over and was like, yeah, man, we gotta cuff you, man. He's like, whatever, whatever. So I'm like, uh, okay. So now she starts freaking out. I'm like, it ain't that serious, you know, whatever, whatever. So they put me in cuffs. He was like, the detective said they coming down here to get you. I'm like, from Ridge Pike, we in Southwest. So I'm like, what? So we stood out there for about an hour, bro. Four White Marsh cop cars pulled up with the detective in an unmarked. I'm like, five of them. You start, I'm so here, I'm like, did I touch my person? Three Philly police, four White Marsh police and the unmarked. So people is riding past, like I heard somebody out the car like, yo, man, what you doing? Cause I'm in, I'm in Southwest.
You do feel guilty.
I'm filling my back pockets like, dog, did the lady? It just was so bizarre. So when they got out, the detective came up, he had the iPad with the guys, he, they had the video of them stealing the credit cards. So I'm like, and one of them was heavyset, one of them was smaller. So I'm just like, alright, even the sergeant from Philly was like, alright, that's clearly not him. So what are we doing? He's like, no, no, but look. And then they show me walking past them and, and do it. So and, and I'm like, yeah, look, black people.
I don't know how many black people you know.
So the um, this is the craziest part of it. When I left the supermarket, it was because her flight was coming, she was a flight attendant. Her flight was coming in. So I, I was like, kind of running late. And I was like, well, let me just go down to airport, pick her up. And that's the reason why I was in Southwest. But if I didn't pick her up, I wanted pizza.
You would have still been up there.
I wanted pizza and it's a Pizzeria Uno for the Ridge Pike when you pass IKEA. Where did they go when they stole the credit cards?
You'd have just been getting out of jail.
But they let me go and, and you know, whatever. The Philly cops was, the White Marsh Township, the cop was just a complete jackass. But the Philly cops was like, yo, apologize for everything.
But you bring up an interesting point, cultural competency. And what the norms are in, in a city. And one of the things. And what the norms are in, in a city. And one of the things that is being examined is that cops should live in Philly.
Mm-hmm.
Cause right now with your contract with the FOP.
Oh, absolutely.
You, after five years, they can move back to Bucks County.
Really?
Yes. And so you, so here's the importance of that. You can't help something that you afraid of.
Absolutely.
And if I don't come in, I don't know the difference between the two of you, a person who is a bad person versus somebody having a bad day. There's a big difference in that.
Yeah.
And the effect of how people interact culturally.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, I think the fact that you have the ability to end someone's life and change their life over, you know, a, a common.
Over lunch meat.
Over a mistake that.
Or just them generally being disagreeable because they don't agree with how you're handling them and their life can end because of.
And me, I'm, I'm not a fly off the handle person. So I, and it's funny, like looking back, I always say like, I gotta be the first nigga on earth who pulled a cop over.
Yeah, when you said it, I was like, oh, okay.
But it's just like looking back.
You did have your uniform on.
Yeah, yeah. I like, I was in my uniform still. I left, left from work. So it's like, looking back on just a lot of little situations where it's like, we had a cop in my neighborhood growing up, hospital. He was super cool. Like everybody knew him. He knew everybody. He knew your mom, he knew your dad. Yo, how your dad doing? Everybody, they, they still be playing softball down. It's like, and he would come through, he would, he would just walk through the block. He had talked to everybody, talked to the old.
Was this when you was living in a suburb?
No, it was in Pinrose. You know what I'm saying?
Because I know you're suburban, didn't you?
No, no, no. This is when I was living in Pinrose, Southwest. But it's just, that's how he was. You know what I mean? Like he would literally park the car and get out and walk. He had parked the car in front of a moat and just walk around.
So living in Philly as a police officer, you can't detach yourself from what's going on. You ride by it, you're a part of it. I had a, so you're not allowed to work in the same district that you live in.
Yeah.
But that's okay. We had a police sergeant, female, that used to come on my old block. And she would be tired. She'd have her utility belt over her shoulder and she would had a grizzly on. Them young boys across the way that was doing all this and doing all that loud talking, whoop. Fold their hands like they was in church, right? Because of her presence.
Mm-hmm.
And you know, for the rest of that night, they were going, they wasn't going to yell too much.
Yeah.
That kind of input on blocks matters. And so if you up in White Marsh Township now, you know, it's almost like cop land.
Oh, yeah.
You know, you saw that movie where, you know, yeah, I do my work here, but I go home to something else.
Yeah.
And we, we really need to have police officers a part of. We used to have a, uh, a corporal named Santiago out of the nineteenth.
Oh, yeah.
Remember him? He used to be our referee for our basketball games.
Mm-hmm.
The, the thing that I, I miss him so bad.
Mm-hmm.
He, we had these two Warren groups of guys and they were playing ball. They were balling. And there was a hard foul and one boy jumps up, he takes off his shirt and he, he's ready to go. Santiago gets in front of him. He said, the reason we're having this basketball game right now is for this moment right here. Conflict resolution that doesn't end in violence. And the boy looked at him and said, what's your name? He said, my name's Scott. He said, you play for them all the time? He said, yeah. He said, next time I see you, I'm gonna score twenty-five points with you. And they walked away. Nobody died. Nobody got shot. Nobody got stabbed.
Yeah.
And Santiago de-escalated that because he knew these guys and they respected him enough to listen.
Right.
If you from White Marsh.
Yeah, you might listen to it.
You playing soccer.
Go and kill each other.
Yeah. You know what I'm saying?
More overtime for me.
Yeah, handle that, yeah.
Uh, rounding out the political, uh, conversation.
I have one more question I wanted to ask, what have you?
Uh, I just want to talk about the state and local elections.
Oh, no, we can save that. Cause I got one more question I'm gonna ask. We talked about it last week, the black people and the Democratic Party. Why is it that it's like, I think the word you had was beholden. That's a good word. I guess that's the word of the week. But like, black people are almost like, if you don't roll with the Democratic Party, then it's something wrong with you. Why is that? Like where, where do you think that's?
How did we get here?
How did we get there?
So I think it's, I think it's a generational thing. Um, not saying millennials versus baby boomers or anything. I do. Um, I think, uh, it's gotten to that point because I feel like Democrats haven't met people where they are and had conversations about what we actually can do for your.
This is why I couldn't be a, like, uh, animal at the zoo.
But I mean, I just think, um, Democrats have, I feel like taken so many communities for granted for a very long time.
Okay.
And I think that the conversation has always been polarizing and they've painted this picture of the Republicans as being, you know, white races and things like that. But I think the Democratic Party hasn't done a good job oftentimes with, again, meeting people where they are and explaining how putting people in office that understand your perspective, that live your life experiences, that have.
They just understand your culture really.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And I think Democrats haven't done a good job at doing that. So that's my thoughts on, on why I feel like some blacks are like, you know, of course you can't go with the Republicans. And I think it's a historical thing.
Cause like I said, Carl went through that where people were like really mad at him because he said he was undecided.
Thousands of emails.
But that's the thing. I think the challenge is on elected officials to talk to somebody like Pastor Carl and explain why it matters from their perspective. But you also can't, you can't just say, well, be, well, I feel like this newer generation, you can't just say because your ancestors have died for your right to be able to vote. It has to be because every time.
Yes, I feel like, okay, we've established that.
Yes, yes.
You know, I drive the bus.
Oh, yes, yes, absolutely.
You weren't able to sit on this joint. I'm on here all day.
Absolutely.
You know, I get, we, so we're past that. Now it's like, like he said, reforming the prison, the pipeline, you know, reforming schools, dealing with, you know, and now it's like, okay.
The black, the black wealth agenda and stuff like that.
And I think it's required, we are being forced to now to articulate that vision and how, how is it gonna be measurable? Tangible measurements. If I put you in office, what can I expect to see over the next two years? And I think we can't just simply rely on because you're black, you should be with this party.
Let you go, but one thing Carl noted in saying that he got all those emails, said a lot of them were from older blacks.
Yeah.
Cause they don't, they're just like, yo, no, we need Trump out.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? Can Obama come back? Like, you know, we need Trump out of there. And Carl like, no, we need to get someone who has an actual.
Yeah.
Like, at this point, we've gone through, like he said, a, a game show host, reality star being president.
Yeah.
So I'm cool with Two Chains, The Rock, Kevin Hart, whoever it's gonna be, that's gonna actually have a plan that's gonna work.
Yeah.
I think, if we, we made it through these four years, it's like.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I could be president at this point. You know what I mean? So.
So as a people, we should have no permanent friends.
Right.
No permanent enemies, just permanent interests. And we should measure the Democrats and the Republicans, the independents, whoever, by those interests. And say, alright, here's a report, here's a checklist. Where do you stand on police reform? Boom, check. Where do you stand on school to paycheck, uh, programs? Check. Where do you stand on economic development? Check. And if not, man, next. And it, it's like any relationship. Y'all got relationships?
Absolutely.
Alright, so in the beginning, you was real attentive, wasn't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, right? After a while, you start taking things for granted.
No, she out there, so I be doing my, you know, I'm the man.
So, so.
Say it, man.
If a, if a political party starts taking you for granted.
Yeah.
Alright, then, you know, you might get cheated on.
That is real.
Yeah, yeah.
So you need to constantly show your attention, affection to the appreciation of that relationship. If not, step off.
Yeah.
And we, we gotta hold all of us accountable to the permanent interests we have. Like we losing generations of kids.
Yeah.
Like the kid that, you know, I've been in twelve years.
Mm-hmm.
That kid that was in kindergarten is now graduating. What's his life gonna be like?
Mm-hmm.
Right.
That's what I care about. And, and you know, big corporations, they got two divisions, right? You gonna go hang out with the Trump people. Here's a check for you. Give it to them. And you gonna hang around with the Biden Harris people, right on, right on. Here's a check for you. Whoever wins, only difference is who goes in the door to get what we need.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's the thing. And a lot of, you know, some of the unions in the city of Philadelphia, you know, traditionally they're supposed to be, they're democratic, but some of the unions take that approach.
They playing.
They, they playing both sides.
I ain't gonna call you out, but you know who you are. We know where you been.
But the thing is like with the Democrats, we have the potential not to lose people, I think, to the Republican Party because, I mean, people just already see that they're just trash.
Yeah.
But we have the potential of people sitting at home.
Right.
And that is what is most at stake for this election. We lost Pennsylvania by forty-four thousand votes. That's less people in Philadelphia. Forty-four thousand votes, we lost that election with Hillary by. So I think our biggest thing is that, and my approach is like, listen, we can no longer just discredit or send Pastor Carl these emails, I can't believe you. But like, if that is a perspective, he represents a constituency that has that same perspective.
Like honestly, those are the people you want, the people that are undecided.
Absolutely.
Cause they're the ones who can actually make the change.
Yeah, and you have to figure out what is it that we're not doing as elected officials that's not communicating and connecting to that audience? And that's our job to do that, cause that's what we get voted into to.
So a guy y'all don't know, go Google him. David P. Richardson, state representative up in Germantown. Used to tell us that to give somebody a voter registration card without giving them voter education is like giving the keys to the car without giving them driving lesson.
Right.
We have a constant causal effect to show why your vote matters and what it will produce or the lack of voting, what it will, what it will happen.
Right.
If we don't do that, then we ain't doing our job.
Yeah, we just kind of arbitrarily just tell people vote, vote, vote and don't tell them why or what's at stake or what's their interest or like in a business term with them, what's in it for me? Like, it's not explained clearly to them. It's like, if you vote for me, you will get this. You will see these things. You will see food banks. You will see job opportunities. You will see entrepreneurial grants. The things that people in the actual communities care about.
You for mayor, man.
Oh, absolutely. You don't even live in your district, councilman.
No, you gotta move.
I mean, but that's.
Oh, that's right, Roxburgh.
Yeah. But I mean, that's the important point. And I think we have to make sure we're having a conversation beyond the presidency. Like we have several races that are up for reelection. We have state representatives. I mean, we help control education funding. We direct where COVID nineteen dollars are going. You have the Attorney General. Um, we constantly.
Nina Ahmad.
Yeah, Nina Ahmad, the Auditor General. And when we're having a conversation about George Floyd or Breonna Taylor and people looking at the Attorney General in those areas and what they did wrong, I mean, we have an Attorney General. I mean, I completely support him. But he chose not to prosecute, prosecute not a similar case, but a, a case that involved police brutality. So, I mean, we have our own situations here in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania that we need to be paying attention to. And we also have to be having conversations beyond the presidency.
Definitely. And I was gonna say, kind of to wrap this whole thing up, um, cause I feel like we gonna get a lot of talk through this last point. But, um, I just wanted y'all to speak to like the importance of like the state and local elections going up to the US Senate, Congress, things like that. And not just.
The president.
People focusing on the president.
Like it's the Senate, the House, like all of that matters. Honestly, more if we being technical, but.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, when we're talking about gun reform, um, I mean, we could talk as much as we want about the crime that's happening in the city of Philadelphia.
Oh, I looked it up. Three hundred and eighty-seven murders.
Okay.
I know I went tripping. We was closing in on four hundred.
I said over three fifty.
Yeah.
So.
I, I had a little win. I was optimistic.
But, uh, I mean, when we talk about criminal justice reform, it's controlled by what we do in the legislature. When we talk about gun reform, I mean, that, I mean, we can't get guns off of the street the way we would like to in Philadelphia unless we change some of our gun laws. I mean, we're getting sued by Philadelphia now, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. But, uh, I mean, again.
Wasn't personal.
Right. We wouldn't be, we wouldn't be able to change those laws. Or if you think about marijuana, when we're talking about legalizing marijuana, I'm not necessarily a proponent of it just yet. Because for me, if you're not forgiving all, everybody's record since seventeen seventy-six, then I can't be on board or if you're not.
Crazy. I would think that those two issues would go hand in hand.
Oh, absolutely not.
It's almost like they're looking at it like, oh, this is twenty twenty, that was twenty nineteen and prior. None of that counts.
It's like, if you're gonna focus on prison reform and then legalize marijuana, it's like, yeah, we could do this all in one fell swoop. But it's like, nah, stay right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, because.
Resty auto.
I mean, that's the thing. And also, like, if we pass that type of legislation, like how are we factoring in, um, black and brown communities that have been impacted by, you know, it being illegal? How are we building up businesses that will help them have access to those opportunities? And those are the type of decisions that we make on the state level. Or when we're talking about education, I mean, we live close to Lower Marion where we're constantly reminded every day, the slight difference in the education system. So it's those type of decisions that we make on the state level. Of, of course, when we're talking about the Attorney General that's running. Uh, when it comes to prosecuting banks for doing redlining, something that Kamala did back when she was in California. I mean, those are some of the issues that he takes care of. Or prosecuting police officers that are caught in police brutality cases that are taken up on the state level. So I mean, when we're talking about, again, COVID nineteen spending, like, we make those decisions up there. But one thing we have to remember is that we have a Republican majority up in Harrisburg. I mean, we're fighting tooth and nail trying to, you know, flip the house. But it takes money, it takes resources, it takes people coming out to vote. And, you know, that's why we are pedaling to the metal all the way down to, you know, the last day.
Yeah.
So I supported Barack. One of my greatest pictures, uh, he came in Philly, he had the Tribune newspaper. My picture was on the front of it, supporting him. There were some other council people were with Hillary. I keep that and remind them. I thought that shade hard.
You on the wrong side of history.
I was on the right side of history and he appreciated it. But the reality was, even though I fought very hard for him, I may have seen him two more times in eight years.
Hmm, I found once.
So the damn ballot issues, you're not gonna go run around with Biden and Harris.
Mm-hmm.
But you will see that judge.
Oh, absolutely.
You will see that, uh, state rep that may be able to get you that, um, pardon. You, you will see the councilman who can fix that pothole playground.
Mm-hmm.
So the damn ballot issues matter to your quality of life every day. There's an Auditor General who audits all of the school districts, the difference between Marion, Lower Marion and Philadelphia.
Mm-hmm.
These guys, why do you think these people fight so hard to get on these school boards out there? Why? Cause those are little budgets. They are five hundred school.
And they have their own taxing authority.
And they have their own taxing authority. So they got their little thicket where they do things. They borrow money. They, they don't have to pay back in their tenure. So down the road, these, these districts wind up with all this debt because they raised that money. And then all of those contracts, the legal contracts, the accounting contracts, somebody getting broke off. They're the biggest gangsters around.
Right. The people that's touching the money.
Yes. And so we need to pay attention. And when you say, well, that's them, it's a victimless crime. No, it is not. Because then when the appropriations that come from Harrisburg come to fund the Philadelphia school district, there's a thousand different leaks in the pipeline along the way that we never get our money.
You literally have Lower Marion that has a surplus in their education system, but they still, because of this thing called whole harmless, we can't shrink their budget, even if.
And you reallow it and reassign it to fill it up.
Pretty much.
So the difference between the two zip codes, which is right across the street.
Literally across the street from each other.
So we have to pay attention. If we say be woke, be woke about it all and count that money. If everything in politics confuse you, oh, it gives me a headache, follow the money.
Yeah, simplify.
Like rush hour too. Follow the money.
Follow the money. And it makes sense then. This guy's fighting for this because his law firm represents that.
Absolutely.
And, and once you start to geek out over that kind of monopoly, you then start to become the representative CFISS. The one thing, she was ready on day one, first of all.
Thanks, Councilman.
We, we, we ain't serving no wine before his time. She was ready. But what made her ready was she understood budget.
Mm-hmm.
She could count. And when you start to count, and when you, we, we've, we placed a lot of emphasis locally, where, where they spending that at? I had a, I had a, I might end on this one. So I talked about closing a prison. I'm sitting there, I had just lost the majority leadership. I was, I was in my feelings. I really was. And I was listening to his speech. And he was talking about how he was gonna open and build a brand new prison. He said, you know, up at the House of Correction, they have ninety-degree heat outside, a hundred and ten degree heat inside. It's not fair to the inmates that go there. It's not fair to the prison guards that, and something was wrong. I was like, why is his humanity showing? And you know how you get that feeling on the back end that there's something, there, there's a robbery going on? I just can't find out.
There's a jig somewhere.
And then I thought about it, that his unions were gonna spend the next five years.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Building that prison. And it was gonna be over budget. They were going, so, it might be six years and millions, and so that was the robbery. I pushed the button, I said, let me ask you this. If in the, in Gori in Africa, which is the door of no return, where slaves were put on the ship, if they had won that ship they were getting on, air conditioning, would it made the institution of slavery better? No, let's end slavery. Let's close the prison, reroute that. And he looked at me. You know what I mean? But you follow the money.
Absolutely.
The lesson there is count, watch, watch where they spending money.
Yeah. I mean, and it also lends to the whole education conversation when it comes to equitable funding. So, again, when we have Republicans that live in rural areas, where you have students that are leaving rural, rural areas, but still getting the same allotment, it essentially short changes a place like Philadelphia.
Yeah.
When those guys go to prison up there, they get counted in the census.
Oh, absolutely.
And that, the money from North Philly, where they would've got a playground.
Yep.
Or extra school funding, goes to Potter County where they are housed.
Yeah.
We need to pay attention and follow the money.
And they argue for more prisons because that is their economic foundation engine in their own county. So, that's why elections like state representatives, you know, essentially matter. It's a.
Like, it's crazy, like, when you really look, when you really examine it, like, once, like, the coal mining and, like, the railroads and all that went away, they reassigned those, uh, industrial towns with prisons to keep their industry going and to allow those people to go and have, you know, high five-figure to six-figure jobs.
Private prisons based off of second and third grade test scores. It's like, what? Like.
So, they had this prison Frackville, right?
I used to.
Heard of Frackville.
Yeah, so.
I used to get, work at the Walmart, the DC up there.
So, I'm, I'm up in Harrisburg visiting you, right? And I'm looking at a protest poster, save the prison at Frackville.
Insane.
Right, I'm scratching my, you saw it? I, I'm scratching my head, like, who wants to keep? And somebody told me that when he got released from Frackville, one of the guards said, man, yeah, I heard about your little brother. I heard he tearing up North Philly. Tell him hurry up and come on up here. I need to get some overtime to build my summer home. Told him on the way out the door.
Wow.
Crime is big business too.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
Yep, all of these industrial towns, uh, central Pennsylvania, West Pennsylvania, upstate New York, all of that, like, they've literally built their economy around prisons. There's a Walmart down the street, because you, if you're a woman, you can't come into prison dressed a certain way. You gotta go down the way and get a sweatshirt from Walmart. They all feed off each other. It's crazy.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, the, the, the prison, it's billions of dollars.
Oh, absolutely.
It's, it's, I've watched a documentary on the private prison thing, and it was just like, when I saw that tech, second and third grade test scores, I'm like.
Yeah.
Like, young, what's two plus two? What?
Absolutely.
We gonna need more. Like, that, that's crazy when you really think about it, but it's a reality. And it's like, it, it's, it's sad, cause it don't stop. Like, when he said that to the guy about his little brother.
Yeah.
He meant it.
Yeah, he not playing. He not joking.
And your little cousins, man, man, they're.
Bring them all up. Cause he was getting out. So, I may not get my overtime. Send your brother back up here.
And that's when it like, that's when it hit me the hardest, when like, our governor at that time was shutting down prisons, trying to save money, and population was shrinking because of pol, different policies going, and you just had this up massive protest with these signs, save the prison.
I couldn't believe it. I, I had to stop.
Save the prison. Save the prison.
They saying, save the prison? And the guy explained it to me.
Absolutely.
Our occupancy ain't high enough. We running at like sixty-two percent. We need to be at ninety-two.
So, so if you figure, people get like one thirty for a day for inmate.
Hmm.
Multiply that by five thousand up at Frackville.
Yeah.
You doing alright.
Fifty thousand a year per inmate.
Yep.
Not to mention the food, the food contracts, the maintenance contracts.
That was, that was the, the documentary talking about how Airmark has a contract with the prisons and how much they charge in the prison as opposed to their rendering services going into like, poppy stores and the schools, and like, a cake that would normally cost a vendor, cost them eighty cents, and they sell it for one fifty. In the jail, it costs the jail two dollars, but they selling it for seven. It's nuts.
And they, they're experimenting on what nutritional minimums.
Yeah.
They can give them.
Yeah. What, what, what we barely need to give you to keep you going.
Yeah. What's gonna wake you up in the morning and like, let you down at night?
Pressing up these license plates.
Yeah, real talk.
And making these Victoria's Secret, uh, lingerie to these people.
It's crazy.
So, listen, once you, being woke is like cleaning up a little bit of your apartment. Once you clean that little bit, you see how dirty the rest of it is. So, you, you have a responsibility, uh, in this process, that you, you started seeing after George Floyd, all the other inequities. Like, damn, well, why are they doing this and why are they doing that? And if we stay woke, you asked an important question. Let's say Biden-Harris wins. What happens next? Well, if you go back to sleep.
Yeah.
If you stay woke, plenty.
And I do think that is, you know, honest conversation, an honest critique about elected officials. It's like, if, you know, people are gonna complain about Barack Obama, it's like, well, everybody was hope and hype when he first got elected. How do we hold everybody accountable every election cycle? So, I run every two years. So, that, there's the same pressure, the same conversations that Pastor Carl are having, we need to have that every election cycle. So, next year, we have our District Attorney. And we need to have that conversation with him. How did you, you ran on a progressive platform, how did you deliver for the city of Phila?
And that's Krasner, right?
So, yeah, last time, we were running.
FOP hates Krasner.
Yeah, they hate his guts.
This is gonna be a good fight.
They hate his guts.
So, we were running, and we, we did the soda tax, which was, you know, questionable.
That's a city. It's just so everybody.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so when the local grocery store in your district closed.
It did.
They brought me in before the Philistines and said, Councilman, we like you. You my man, fifty grand. If you don't get that grocery store back open, you're done, son.
Yeah, our careers were over at that point. Absolutely.
We had to go all the way to New York to find the operator, right? But we, we were at the ribbon cutting.
And what supermarket was this?
This is, so ShopRite has shut down at, uh, Sixty-Fifth and Harvifer. So, remember when Jeff Brown was going at it with the mayor about the soda tax?
Him and the mayor rumbling, and it, my career was at stake.
Yes, absolutely. I was, I was literally the year that he, the year, I'm like asking Jeff, so like, when are you closing this? And literally, like, three months later, I'm running for office. I'm like, Jesus.
So, we found, we, sometimes it's better to be born lucky than smart. I admit it. But we found.
Always, yeah.
We worked hard. It's good to be both.
Oh, absolutely.
And we found it, we opened it back up, and that's how you hold people accountable.
Oh, absolutely.
Is it still a ShopRite?
No, it's now, uh, Golden Farms.
Yeah, but they got better produce and better fish.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I haven't been over that way in years, so I, 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 I remember it was a ShopRite, but I.
You gotta come on up. It's a fresh new look, everything.
And we get ready to open a, we get ready to re, we're closing the golf course.
From that area, but, you know.
Don't even come out there.
I don't even wanna talk.
Something I see your ass up in there.
Excellent.
Hey, grocery.
So.
Yeah, you, I heard about bus drivers.
Oh, I know about bus drivers too. I heard about them too.
Okay. I got it going on every stop.
Not me. I be, I just stayed myself.
Can we, uh, can we end on this note? Speaking about money, there is a huge misconception in the communities and in the black community particularly, that Trump gave them the stimulus money, this, uh, PU A money, SBA. Like, they, they have convinced themselves that Trump gave them this money.
Before y'all came here, it was a rapper, Asian doll, who was basically like, she was voting for Trump because.
All the homies is up.
All the homies is up right now. Yeah, and, and this is like a viral thing. Oh, that's going around. And it's like, yeah, we, there is like a thing where like, black folks is like, yeah, no, Trump opened it, opened the faucet, man, we getting it. And it's just like, I don't think that's how it necessarily, necessarily worked.
So, welfare checks come, you know, on your debit card. Did he do that too? No? Or is that a system of safeguards that both Democrats and Republicans voted for?
Absolutely.
Right. So, that's number one. Number two, come January, that faucet is going off. And remember, I told you first, and I'm not proud of that or happy about it, but I'm telling you, Democrat or Republican, we cannot sustain.
Yeah.
That kind of payment going forward. And so, he's hyping you up. They used to bring trinkets to put slaves on ships, these little brass rings, and you know, they would give you that, or give you some bullets, and yeah, was it worth it? Long run, was it worth it?
Right.
And it ain't.
Uh, like, literally, I said to my homie the other day, I'm like, they have like another stimulus, they actually, they, the, the, I think they have like two or three. That when they threw out there, and then they did a framework, and they, they was just like, yeah, we done rapping about this. And it was just like, that right there will show you. When you start hearing all of the, oh, well, we'll talk after the elections, and it's, it's like.
And we, the president absolutely said, no more negotiations over the next, over the next stimulus bill.
I respect you in the morning.
It, oh, I'm going, move from that.
After the election.
That's essentially what he said about the next stimulus conversation, is, you know, not even considering. This is after, you know, the well is already drying up. I mean, you know, you really don't have any more unemployment, you know, money coming through. No more PU A and no more, um, I mean.
SBA, the PPP.
I think the SBA just ended the fifteen.
It's, wow.
I mean, and the eviction moratorium is up, and, you know.
It was a good time.
But you know, he's already setting up National Guards and other occupiers to come in when there is social unrest. He's counting on it.
It's no way. It's, it's inevitable at this point, I personally. Cause win or lose, he, he wins the antagonistic behavior from his fans. It's gonna push somebody over the edge. He loses, they're just gonna act nuts. So, it, it's just.
They just plotted to kidnap the governor of Michigan.
Yeah.
And there's like, no talk about it. And there was another plot, I think, to kidnap, uh, it was another, uh.
Somebody tried to hit him with anthrax a couple weeks ago.
It was like the governor of North Carolina, or so they tried to.
I missed that one.
There was a whole, like, once.
They locked up a woman that was trying to hit him with anthrax. I'm like, I didn't even know anthrax was still up. I, where'd she get anthrax?
Watching YouTube videos.
But yeah, they, somebody tried to mail him, so they're like, again, give me a stamp, you know what I'm saying? They tried to mail him, and it's just like, we're, we're headed towards a weird, weird.
Yeah, we are.
As crazy as, and I said it, I'm like, uh, twenty twenty has just been insane. And I'm like, damn, how, how crazy is it that at the end of this year, we now have a presidential election? That's gonna just, I'm like, that's gonna be our, like, series finale.
Twenty to be over.
It's like, the series finale is gonna be insane.
The only thing that'll make it somewhat solid, you know, solid is if we win the White House.
Yeah.
Other than that, you could keep this whole year.
Yeah. 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 I mean, and even like, when you think about who, what, what he's putting or considering to put in the next stimulus bill, it's not a lot of protections for the citizens on the ground that are, you know, suffering the most.
Right. Usually, it's mostly for corporations, right?
Absolutely.
Yeah, all people, all people, it's like the forest for the trees. All people can see is, how much extra a week? Four hundred? Alright.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Not realizing it's burning down behind you.
And let's say, let's say this, if you get it, please stay out of sacks.
Yo, those lines, bro, bro, literally driving down City Ave, you know, on City Ave, you have a, a sacks. I never seen a line, they were handing out water and like, putting up.
They had the tin hug.
I'm like, what?
Instead of buying a piece of real estate.
Oh, yeah.
Paying your rent maybe, right?
Pay your rent maybe.
Right, right. You wanna go get that bag? Stop. Come on, that, that, you know, and sacks need the money, right?
I'm sure they got, uh.
I'm sure they, but that's what they said, that, you know, they gave black folks all this, uh, you know, money, or they.
Retail's up.
They, retail is up, but it's like, home buying ain't up. Like, people not buying, like, land purchasing is not up. Like, you could buy an acre of land in rural South Carolina for five hundred dollars. Like, land purchasing is not up.
Everything past like, uh, Moncler coats is not up. Everything below that is up. Sneakers, socks, drawers, all that is up.
If we get a little stimulus from the Dems and the Rs, invest it.
Invest it. Buy you some stock, buy you some art, buy you something that's gonna appreciate. Or if it don't appreciate, at least you hold true and you got a little sum for yourself at the end.
If I see you in sacks, I'm a clown.
Listen, I went to, uh, what's the, remember, uh, Neiman's? Was that you? I was like, I don't know how to get in here now.
Oh, you got, don't you gotta make an appointment?
Yeah, yeah.
Huh? I thought you gotta make an appointment now to get in.
No, no, they, 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 they relaxed coming in, but you still can't go in. So, I was like, how the hell do you get in this? You have to like, come in the mall to the second level and come down, escalate. So, I, I, I get in there or whatever, and it was my birthday. I just, I wanted to get a shirt, so I, I bought a, uh.
So, you spent your pool?
No, I don't have any pool. But this, this is the point I'm trying to make. I bought a Burberry shirt, and, uh, you know, I'm, I can fit all of this stuff now. So, I was like, damn. So, the shirt was like five something, so I, whatever, and I, and I, as I came.
Right, I'm like, whoa.
As I came back around the other side, it was like.
We got the wrong job, Councilman.
Uh, Puerto Rican guys, I guess, Rican, Dominican, whatever. And they had like, you know how people bring clothes into the Goodwill?
Yeah.
That's how they were getting, they were going out. I'm neither.
I'm sorry. You spent five hundred dollars on a shirt?
It's one every, every now and then. I don't get besides myself all the time. But.
Never.
Listen to what I'm saying. Chad, no, when do we?
I, I, you see, I'm being quiet.
First of all, I see Chad doing the unboxing online all the time.
I'm talking about me, when do I ever? You know what I'm saying? I'm like, yeah, every now and then.
He's treating himself. I have a problem. This is a whole nother show.
But it, but they.
I thought I was doing something when I did a whole suit.
But Pete, then, the point I'm making is, they had all these clothes in their hands.
Coming out of Neiman's?
And they were putting it on, on the counter, whatever. So, the girl was like, checking them out, whatever, whatever. And I was like, don't do it, don't do it, don't do it, to myself. And Man Man went in his joint, he pulled out the blue card. I was like, damn, I need some more. Cause they was standing up in there. He threw that card up, I was just like, damn, man. I'm sick.
You start wondering, like, how much you got on that?
Cause I'm not even, cause I just spent five hundred on a shirt, I'm not even buying lunch up here. I'm going back home, you know? Cause I got stuff in the refrigerator.
Going to the halal shop.
We not buying five hundred dollar shirts. It's okay.
Now I know what to ask for.
Yeah. But it, it's crazy though, because he's not lying. Like, they, they, they tore up sacks, Neiman's, Nordstrom's, every, everywhere that had anything. So, it's like.
Lines, and then, and, and what was crazy.
All Barney's had to do was make it three more months.
Yeah, Barney's, get the hell down.
What was crazy, they had to add security, police, because dude knew dude from out there, and he was bringing his girl up here. It could've been a problem. All on these checks. So, we can, if you know better, do better.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, we appreciate y'all coming through today. I spent the whole, basically, two hours with us.
Yeah, man, we did. It was two hours?
Yeah.
You start flowing, it don't even feel like it happened to him.
Yeah, uh, but we appreciate y'all coming through.
Everybody says that when they come through. Damn, we been going to him. We so used to it now, but like.
Uh, parting shots, anything y'all wanna say to people? And then, most importantly, give them y'all information where they can contact y'all at.
So, uh, I have a corny, like, Twitter and Instagram hashtag, so it's not as, you know, Matt Makes Me Sick and Plus CEO, where I did E25. It's just Morgan underscore Cephas. I'm on Instagram, don't really do Twitter and, uh, Facebook.
Stay away from Twitter, if you can.
I just don't know how to navigate a joint, man. It's like intense. You gotta tweet like, every five minutes to like, stay relevant.
Figured out, they kick me off the app again.
I saw one of your tweets yesterday, I just was like, two weeks. I'm giving him two weeks.
Yeah. So, those are my, uh, social media handles. Um, and I just say, get out and vote. Um, the election today is the last day to register to vote. So, if you haven't registered.
That's good, cause this episode is coming out today.
Oh, great, 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 great.
Make sure we push that.
If you can, get out and register. Uh, register as many people you know, if they're not registered, and just show up to the polls, November third.
Because I, I, I did mine at like, a actual place. Can you register? Like, what's the deadline? As far, no, I know today, but like, as far as the, the night, or is it day?
Like, actually getting it in?
Yeah.
You have to get it in, yeah, it has to be postmarked by today. Absolutely. Postmarked by today. But you also have these, uh, what are they? Early voting access centers that are throughout the city of Philadelphia. I have one in my district at Overbrook Elementary School. Uh, what's that, like, uh, it's like Sixty-third and Lebanon. Yeah.
Funny, actually, they say they have one in Roxboro, Ohio.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Also in my district.
Yeah, they been voting out there.
I mean, I, I, I had to go there because my address is, I told you, I just recently moved in there, so I still had to go to Roxboro. That's how I know that it's at Roxboro, Ohio.
Yeah. So, you can register to vote there. You can actually get your ballot there, fill it out. I did it, um, maybe about two weekends ago. So, I would just say, get to the polls, if you're going to the polls November third, register to vote, get those ballots in as early as possible, and vote the entire ticket, not just for president. Our congresspeople are running this time around, state reps, Attorney General.
No silly write-ins this time. We don't need any of that.
Listen, I, I get a meme write-in every now and again, so.
No, no, I'm talking about, six thousand people voted for Hennessy with the last election.
Oh, really?
Six thousand people voted for Hennessy, and eighteen hundred people voted for Harambe, the gorilla that got killed at the zoo.
Consistent that.
Eighteen hundred people voted for him for president. It's like, so we don't need none of that.
No write-ins. Don't vote for Kanye. Vote for real, like your life depends on it, cause it, it really does.
So, my name is Curtis Jones Jr., hashtag Run Kurt Run, Mr. Fourth District. Vote as if your life depends on it, because it's not just your life. It's your kids' 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 life when you put and appoint people to the Supreme Court.
Absolutely.
That's a lifetime position. Um, don't forget the ballot questions. Vote yes for the establishment of the Citizens Police Oversight Commission. Vote yes for the Victims Advocacy Office, cause they impact our lives. Please have a plan to vote. You can vote on Election Day, you can vote in the early, uh, voting centers, but please vote. And when you come there, be patient. You might have to stand in line, but there's people that went before you that fought for this vote. They didn't let billy clubs beat it out of them, they didn't let dogs bite it out of them, they didn't let grandfather clauses keep them out of it. And we should have that same intensity. Um, and get in some good trouble after the election.
Absolutely.
Hold people accountable. Don't let us off the hook. I can, I represent mine. If I do something right, I say it. If I do something wrong, I admit it, and I can do better. But if nobody's paying attention, and that's when bad things happen. So, once you get woke, stay woke, and be a part of it. And I wanna thank you guys for having the discussion. But you could've been talking about all kinds of five hundred dollar shirts.